hereby call this meeting to order. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you everybody. Um, okay guys. Just to state for the record, we have four directors in attendance. Actually, five directors in attendance, no absent. And both of our student reps today. So, appreciate that. So now, on to approval of the agenda. So, for the good of the order, is there anybody that would like to remove or add anything from the consent agenda or modify the agenda for this evening? I'll entertain an addition. Hearing none, I'll turn the, turn the mic over to what's up.
Motion to approve.
I'll move it, we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, no objections, agenda is approved.
Excellent, good news, uh, good news is that we started 2025 and everybody came back and we're off to, our schools are off and operating. And we appreciate all the, the work that takes, but also the, the time that families had with their, with their, with their children, their students. And we just, we like, those of us in education like it when the students are actually in school. And I know that's probably true for some parents as well. January is a special month in schools in that it is a board recognition month. And so, um, I'm not gonna read this one. Hey, I just wanna share on behalf of the district, our appreciation for the service that citizens, you, provide to, to the schools. There's, when it talks about public education, there's just a lot of passion and, and connected to that. And there's a lot of interests, there's a lot of ideas, there's a lot of celebration, there's some challenges, and I just, I just, just wanna express our appreciation for your willingness to serve. And the district picked up some small gifts, which is all we're allowed to give. Small gifts for your service, a little bit of swag for Lynn School District and wear it with pride. So, I know it's time away from your families, I don't know if you saw the Facebook post, but I put up a history of school board directors and, and generations, people started talking about their parents and their grandparents and things and, you know, that's, that's what you have to look forward to, right? If one thing you could do is, what's your grand, what are your grandkids gonna say about your service, you know, thirty years from now? And so anyway, just, just an appreciation. I don't think we have to be awkward and you have to pull out the gifts, but I know there's a stocking hat, 'cause I saw it, and I'm not sure what else. And student reps, uh, willingness to, to represent and, and be a part of, of a leadership team, we just, we just really appreciate the time. And tonight, we get to hear about kinda some exciting steps that have been, been taken.
Very exciting.
What's that?
Very exciting steps.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're excited about that. So, I'm good, that's, that's good for me, Mr. Director Burbird.
Okay, thank you for that uptake. So now, at this point, I'll ask for approval of the minutes from the last meeting on the second. I'll ask, first off, if there's any corrections to the minutes. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 2nd.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, minutes from the second are approved, as they are in the packet. Next is the consent agenda for today, which was distributed as part of your packet last Friday. So I'll ask if there's any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in our packet.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Alright, motion is, thank you for that, is the motion and a second. All in favor of the consent agenda? Say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. None, consent agenda is approved. Moving along, information from the audience, so...
Those wishing to address the board must sign up on the sheet provided. Individuals may address the board on agenda items as well as non-agenda items. Tonight's agenda items that may result in action being taken by the board include: Second readings of Policy seventeen thirty-three, Board Compensation; Policy twenty twenty-two, Electronic Resources and Internet Safety; Policy thirty-four fourteen, Infectious Diseases; And thirty-four twenty-four, Opioid-Related Overdose Reversal.
Got it, um, and so now we have one person signed up to testify tonight, Rebecca Van Sliek.
Well, we just want to recognize you guys and thank you for your service on the school board. And I just have a little something from the Hospitality Committee of BVE and just to say thank you so much for your service. And I know you probably work harder than the paycheck that you get for this job. And it's good to see kids from the high school and kids from former second grade students. So thank you for your service too, so this is just something to say that we think that you are all that. And a bag of chips.
Oh, that's good. And a bag of chips.
All that and a bag of chips.
I'm gonna use that.
That is good. Let me know if you need help.
I'm doing it.
This is good, this is part of your PT, isn't it?
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. I'm spicy?
Flaming hot.
Flaming hot.
Now I'm excited what you're getting.
My granddaughter eats it.
Oh, you're good.
She's three.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you Rebecca. As advisor to the board, I'd recommend not eating Cheetos during the meeting.
Especially in the flaming hot.
Cool.
Alright, um, yeah, next, information from board directors and student representatives. So just a couple of, I'll just share a couple of things prior to jumping into this. We, when we met last week, me and Ken with David, we discussed kind of, you know, the way that agenda item's been going and, and one of the things we decided was that it's being so far down in the agenda at the end, we seem to run out of steam, number one. And so we decided we'd try to pull it up earlier so that the student reps are always, always here for that because sometimes there's pertinent information, information they wanna share. And also appreciate all the collaboration with the rest of the board and keeping that part of the agenda really dedicated to just sharing information. So, we thought we'd try that this week. So, yeah, at this point, I'll just, I'll just go ahead and just like we always do and ask if there's any information from board directors that they'd like to share this week.
I'll just give an update, last week we talked, or last meeting, we talked about discussion or a review of the, sort of the IT security stuff. I did get an email from our Director of IT, which I've reviewed. It's probably gonna generate some conversation, maybe even a meeting with he and I. So I'm not prepared to give any sort of report today, but hopefully within the next, within the next month or two, maybe the, maybe two meetings from now perhaps, I'll, I'll have more information for you guys.
Director Burbird, did you wanna ask student representative first or? I, yeah, I don't, that's fine, if you, if you all wanna share, 'cause we do have an agenda item you're gonna cover later, but if there's, is there anything else you'd like to cover?
Well, so, um, yesterday we had our MLK assembly and we got a lot of positive feedback from the students. They absolutely loved our speaker Christian. And not only was he there for the MLK assembly, but he was also giving speeches on how to fall in love with poetry during creative writing classes, which I got, which I got to be a part of, which was really cool. And yeah, it was just phenomenal, it was an hour, an hour-long assembly. And pretty much every person that I talked to about it, they said this is the first long assembly that they've been engaged the entire time and it didn't feel like an hour.
Wow.
So, there's that.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
I feel like he touched a lot on like the inspiration for students starting the change, which was like an overarching idea for like MLK Day and the impact he made. But, yeah, we both got lots of positive feedback for him as a speaker and a presenter and it was just, it was really good.
But I think that's enough said, he was just amazing.
Yeah.
Okay, Kyle, anything other than that?
Nope, that's the most recent.
Okay.
With MLK, yeah.
And Jim and I met with, as well as Superintendent Vandergat, with Representative Joe Timmons. And I got a follow-up with him over, after the town hall at Blaine. And it was cool because he already followed up on some things that Superintendent Vandergat had sent him as far as costs for things regarding MSOC. And I also just sent an email, I've been reaching out just to different, or our local districts, just trying to get people engaged in the process. Also have written a letter and that we're gonna send to a couple sponsors of a bill. And just kinda honing in what our focus is for this legislative session. And, yeah, just, if it requires, hopefully have time to, energy to, oh, sorry about that. Engage the process as far as making public comment and just, you know, keep plugging away. Doing a little more this year than last year, so it feels good, yeah. That's it.
Yeah, and since it's legislative related, I'll say the same thing. I'm, I'm, I'm reaching out to school, other school districts outside of Wauken County is, is how we're dividing it as a, and so, I'm busy doing that. There's four bills of concern out there with regard to local control, which is our, that we're watching very closely. And then the, the first that I saw of, of opportunities to testify will be next, believe next Thursday, the twenty-first. So we'll, we'll let y'all know if, if we need to plan on that, so, anyway.
Is it Tuesday or Thursday?
Uh, ones I saw were twen, well, maybe it is Tuesday, it's the twenty-first, I'm sorry, it is, it is Tuesday, you're right.
Yeah, I was also gonna say that, you know, those hearings are open to the public.
Yes.
So anybody who's listening and wants to testify on those four bills that are kinda eroding that local control parental right-related bills, feel free. That's gonna be Tuesday, eight AM, so very, very important. We had a, the Teaching and Curriculum had a meeting yes, was it yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah, thank you. So we had a meeting yesterday and it was kinda very cool to, you know, get information on the school improvement plans, the history for it, you know, when it began and whatnot. So we think we went all the way back to two thousands and two thousand and two, No Child Left Behind and whatnot, and how, you know, that became to Common Core and how we have such rigorous testing systems. I am just kinda shocked, you know, third grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, and then there's tenth grade. And then I got to know that there was another type of testing done because the SBAS are for reading, writing, which is ELA, and math. And then there's for science, Washington has the WCAS. I don't know what that stands for, there's a lot of acronyms that teachers use and admin uses, but that's given at the eighth and eleventh grade, so. And fifth, sorry, thank you. So very interesting, you know, so many tests and whatnot. And then, one thing that kinda was, struck me was looking at data. They shared, you know, how OSPI kinda grades or does their assessment of whether a school is in improvement or not in improvement, so that was, that was very interesting. It's, you know, kinda complicated and maybe Director Danny can, Director Martinez can add to that. The other thing was we looked at, I think it was Kennewick School District, and I think this might be something of, you know, interest to the board as a piece of information, is that they have, no, it's a big school district, right? They've got dedicated people to do that, but again, I'm not saying we're gonna do that, but that, that's just something informational that struck me was they had their data for, you know, previous years lined up for different, different tests, be it STAR assessment, be it SBAS or the WCAS. That was very interesting, very enlightening and very, you know, kinda a learning opportunity to kinda look at it and how their grading is, is going, you know, compared to their state assessments versus their own assessment, school assessment. So that was, that was pretty powerful stuff there. Now, do you have anything to add directly?
Yeah, it was, there was a lot, I learned about WISF, which was another thing I added to my list of, of acronyms. So, but one of the things that I was really surprised on was even just talking about schools being in improvement and how right now we had Fisher X out and BVE is currently in, but, and that was due to one student. So it's, it's slightly misleading just the way that it's, that it's worded, so I was very surprised by that. And just looking at the fact that we've only had two schools since twenty eighteen, being in improvement and something about forty percent of schools within the state are in improvement. And so, I thought that was, you know, we always wanna strive for excellence and so I thought that was, that was good, given the other data concerning other schools. So, I was pretty pleased with that.
Great, thank you. Alright, anything else? Great, well, thank you for that, appreciate that. Next, we have assignment, board assignments, right, yes. So, last week, or last, sorry, last, two weeks ago, we talked a little bit about board assignments, which is an annual activity, expression of interest in, in board directors serving on different committees. And so, after putting some thought into it, I just felt like, for the sake of consistency and continuity, number one. Number two, just the fact that it takes a while to, to get your feet under you, there's a steep learning curve, especially for the three, I'll say for me, I don't wanna speak for the other two new members, but. There's a steep learning curve, just felt like it was good just to keep the committee assignments the way they are. And I think the other thing is that I think, you know, we're, we're doing a good job on our committee assignments right now too, I mean, just hearing you teach, you know, you and Danny talk about teaching and learning and I think we're in a good spot. And so we'll keep them the same for, for this year. And then, although I will say next year, it would be good to mix things up because two years is good, but it's always good to get new eyes on things. So, it would be good to, to change things up next year, would be my, my, my two cents on that. So, anyway, yeah, any, any thoughts from anybody or?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Alright, reports, I am going to turn the meeting now over to Superintendent Van Hooijer.
Yeah, we have two superintendent reports this evening. The first one is for our student representatives and our, our goals, your, the board's goals and their goals to elevate engagement. And so, we're gonna talk, they're gonna talk mostly about some of those steps. I think they're pretty excited about it, also on page seventeen of the packet, there is a, there is a kind of a cheat sheet for you. And then the second superintendent report is gonna be around capital improvement expenditures, I have some information, the, the committee capital. Capital improvement expenditures, and that should be pretty brief. Alright, so, page seventeen, Ashley and Kyle, are you comfortable just jumping into this? And how did these meetings come about and, you know, what are some of the outcomes? And what are some of the next steps?
Um, okay, so first, I think these meetings came about like mutually. I think we all kinda wanted a change to get more student voice in Lynn High School. But Freeman reached out to both Ashley and I and asked to have a meeting and how we could actually take action into getting more student voice, which I thought was really important. And we, we kind of pondered a lot of different ideas, like maybe like a lunch in with students to like hear what they wanna talk about. But we ended up following with, we have activity period on Wednesdays at the high school and on a stay put and study day, which is where you just stay in your classes and you just work on your schoolwork. We have like a select amount of students who wanna come to the meeting. And we're gonna talk about some topics that are just on some students' mind. I sent out a survey, or we both sent out a survey through Freeman, where they could reply with their name, their grade, and then a list of topics that they could rank from like their top three most, yeah, most important or most concerned topics about the high school. And then we got all that feedback and then we sent out emails for people who wanted to participate and we'll be engaging next week for about like thirty minutes?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty minutes.
If we get lucky.
Yes. Just having a student-led conversation and we're not gonna have like adults, we'll have adults present, obviously, but they're not gonna be engaging, it'll be all student-led. And then we'll take all of that feedback and we'll turn it into actual, or to action, data and action, yeah.
Yeah, so what we're planning is we have reserved the library for that time. And as we sent out those, the survey, there was just a question, hey, would you like to be a part of these student focus groups? And there was a yes, no, and then a maybe. We got nine yeses, ten maybes, I think.
Yeah, and then nine no's.
Nine no's. And we're actually kinda surprised we got anything at all, but.
Yeah.
So we sent out emails to those people letting them know, did you send those out? Yep, okay, great, I was just gonna make sure. So we sent out emails letting, letting the kids know that, hey, this is gonna be at this time in the library. And what we're planning to do is we, Kyle and I have this entire, not necessarily script, but something to guide us. And we're gonna try to let the kids lead it. And we're gonna just be there to guide and to take notes and figure it out. And then at the end, we'll have a QR code and the kids can scan the QR code and they get to send us what their, their takeaways are from the meeting. But we did get a lot of really good, what's the word, I'm blinking. Responses from the service, and we have them all right here. But we figured out what is on the kids' minds the most. And we, we thought the same thing, but we weren't sure if it was just us. And now we know it's, it's a majority type deal that the kids wanna talk about these things.
Also, we had an option on the survey, if you didn't wanna participate in the meeting, that you could say whatever, or like say.
You could still tell us.
Yes, still give us your voice so that we can report back to Freeman and you guys as well, which I thought was really useful because some people don't feel comfortable going in those settings.
Yeah. And we, we still sent out those emails to the kids who said maybe, just 'cause it could be because they weren't, they didn't wanna commit right then and there or whatever the reason is, we still sent the email to them, we sent them the RSVP. And so, I don't know how many kids have RSVP'd.
Around, I think around nine or ten.
Nine or ten kids have RSVP'd. So this is gonna happen on twenty-second.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday during activity period, which is right after first period, before second period. And I'm super excited. I'm super excited, um, yeah, we're, we're happy to be doing this and.
I'm sorry, I'm slightly confused. So you sent a survey to all the students in the high school?
Yeah, I sent it to Freeman, 'cause I can't personally do it myself. He sent it through the whole school, through Canvas and email.
Okay, saying, do you wanna participate in this thing? You got some responses, you sent some emails out to schedule some meetings. Those aren't the meetings that are listed here as in December, those must have just been planning sessions or something.
Yes, those are planning, yes.
Working this all out, okay.
Yeah, those were with Freeman, Kyle and I.
To figure everything out with this.
Yeah, yeah, figure out, it was just, at first it was like, something needs to be done, what do we wanna do? And we brainstormed, and then second meeting, okay, we know what we wanna do, it was right before break, we know what we wanna do, and then he gave us just the break to think it through. And then we came back after the break and we were like, this is the day we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it.
So the meetings you just mentioned that are on the twenty-second, did you say, or?
The meeting on the twenty-second is with the kids.
It's with the students.
That's the, that's the one that's listed in our capturing feedback that will include free-form discussion, QR code at the end, okay, got it, alright.
Yes, that is with the students.
Okay, that's interesting. So you've got nine or ten that said they're gonna come to that?
For sure.
So far, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you've got three discussion topics, is it?
Yes.
Is, are there more than that, or are you gonna let them?
We have like a total of like nine or ten, but.
Oh, you do, okay, okay.
Throughout this, or in the survey, it kinda like summarized the top three for me and then I was able to put them into the top three they wanna talk about. And so then, we're gonna have guiding questions for those as well, in case the students don't really know specifically what to talk about.
Right.
Just to get conversation going and see where it goes.
Yeah, we're gonna see if the students can take it from there. And we can just listen and get the feedback. But we do have questions written out for us to use if conversation gets going.
Yes.
So we can keep it moving, 'cause we only have twenty-five minutes if we, we get lucky.
Yeah.
So we wanna get through it, but we don't wanna rush it and it's just such a short time period.
It is, and we probably have shorter than we are saying because we wanna do some sort of icebreaker 'cause we're gonna have all grades there. So we're gonna have like fourteen-year-olds and eighteen-year-olds in the same room. So it could be a little awkward.
Yeah.
So we wanna do like a little activity just to like break the ice a little bit, so it's on.
Yeah.
What's your icebreaker?
We don't know yet.
So will you come, will you come back, like, like you'll have that meeting before the next board meeting? Do you think you'll have, do you think you'll have enough time to come back here with, here's kinda the list of the stuff that we suggested to the staff?
Yeah.
By the next board meeting, do you think, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And hopefully sooner, sooner than later, we'll start taking action. And we're thinking this is gonna be, this isn't just gonna be a one-time thing. We're gonna try to do this over and over again to continue getting student voice. And we want to know if students are seeing a change in what they were talking about at the previous meeting. I'm not sure how often we're gonna be doing this.
Not quite yet.
To be determined, but hopefully at least a few times before the end of the school year.
Okay.
I'd be super interested to learn, and we'll just see how they go, right? But it'll be interesting to me to learn the, the changes that, or the things that get suggested to staff and when they get implemented, are those changes to sort of building policy or, or board policy or? Because it'll be interesting for me as a board director to see what sort of, where those rules or practices or policies are, are established that get, that, that get the suggestions to do them differently. You get what I'm saying? That'll be super interesting to me to see how much of that is sort of board policy related or how much of it is like, like, yeah, you know what I'm saying?
We're also thinking about reporting this back to not only you guys and not only Mr. Freeman, but also the staff in the school, so they know what the students need from them themselves.
Yeah, and we also talked to Freeman about this as like, should we do it from our perspective or his perspective? 'Cause it'll be directly from us as students.
There's talk that we may come in on a no-student day and talk to, talk to the staff ourselves and just get everyone together and I, we feel like if it's coming from us students, then the adults will listen and hear what we're trying to say.
Yeah, rather than just.
Rather than Freeman, 'cause Freeman even agreed, sometimes.
It's true, it's accurate.
Sometimes.
Good conclusion.
It doesn't necessarily reach the right people when it comes from him, so.
There you go, yeah.
Plus, he might translate it in a way that is not consistent with what your perspective is.
For sure.
Yeah, so we, we're totally up for talking to the staff ourselves. Yeah, so we, um, we're totally up for talking to the staff ourselves and, yeah, that's kind of our course of action at the moment.
I like it. So these potential topics are not from the survey. This is just a few that you guys added.
Oh, those are from the survey.
The safety and security, like that one, like.
That was number one, that was number one.
Okay, okay.
And it's not just physical, it's emotional and like drug use in the school and all that other stuff falls under there. So I feel like that one's gonna be a big topic at this meeting.
For sure.
And, and I'm excited to hear from other students.
Could, could we see the results of those, that survey, that initial survey? Do you, would you share that with us?
Yeah, I can share it with you. I have a paper with me, but do you guys want me to like send it to you guys?
Like maybe electronically, yeah, yeah, that'd be awesome to see.
Yeah, we had some, some people saying like, I don't know, and they were kind of just a little wishy-washy, but we got some really good responses that.
And true responses.
True responses that, y- 'cause we know these kids personally and we're like, yeah, we know that person, definitely is super big on that topic.
Kyle, are the names on the survey?
Yeah, I'll take it off though.
Okay. Yeah, if you, if you just send them, yeah, if you just, if you wanna send them to Kelly and we'll, we'll get them to the board anyway that, so.
Yeah, I don't, for my part, I don't necessarily need to see like the individual comments that students make, but more like, like, you know. Twenty students said they're really concerned about this and two students said they were only sort of concerned about that, that's what I would find it.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks, you guys.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Oh, I had Cooper Gradden was the, uh, board rep prior to Ashley. He graduated and he was in town, I ran into him and I told him that, uh, that the engagement was starting.
Yes.
And he was pretty excited and so, you know, we think, we think this is maybe easier to do than, than we, than you think, right? And it does take time and it takes commitment and dedication and follow-through and I'm really proud of you guys.
So Cooper's not off running, running a small country or something?
He is.
He seems like that's probably what he's headed for.
Yeah.
Of course. Alright.
Alright, uh, item number two on the superintendent report is, is an update to the board on, um, capital, uh, project expenditures and so. Uh, tonight's meeting from this point forward is gonna be pretty focused on capital facilities and so one of the things is that, you know, with bonds not passing, we still have needs. And, um, and so part of the response to, uh, that has been to set aside dollars for maintenance and for expenditures. Um, to meet some of the needs, uh, that were there and so that is a, and the board has made this decision to, to separate some money from the general fund. Put it in the capital fund for expenditures, um, and asked that I keep the board updated. And so, um, one expenditure, uh, th- there's a couple expenditures that were already made that I think we, they've been on my whiteboard and then we make these expenditures. And one of them is the Linden Academy Playground, um, and that has already been installed and, and, and spent. It's not in the report tonight, but I've shared it previously. Um, and, uh, the other one is, is that we have purchased, um, transitional kindergarten playgrounds for each of the three elementary schools. And, um, and so those, um, those have already been purchased and they're scheduled to be installed, um, scheduled to be installed over spring break, uh, of this year. So each of those elementary schools will have a, an area for four-year-olds, um, to be able to play. For the public's knowledge, um, our, we used to be a kindergarten through fifth grade and, and the playgrounds were rated for five through twelve-year-olds. And then we began serving four-year-olds and three-year-olds in some cases, uh, and they're not allowed to play on the playground equipment. Um, so we're, um, we asked the community to help with that, um, and that came back as, as not part of the interest. Or, you know, we didn't pass those bonds and so we do feel like that was an important, uh, expenditure, the board felt like that was an important, important expenditure.
Well, can I ask, will we get to, uh, come and play on those when they come in?
You will not.
Well, that's not very nice, dude.
So those are in, and then, um, and then, and then another one that is, is, uh, the safe, uh, remember we had a safety and security task force? And there's also things identified in, in there for, uh, for improvements. And there is a, there is a completion of flashing lights in front of the Linden Middle School. Um, on each end of the property, side of the property and those, um, were installed at a cost, total cost of sixteen thousand dollars. Um, and they should be operating. Um, and then tonight, um, uh, we have received final quotes and costs. To, uh, resurface the high school track. Uh, this is a, this is a challenging circumstance. Um, in that it is a track that is not in good shape, it's in disrepair. Uh, and it, it increases the chance of, of injury. It also isn't able to be used full, to its full capacity. For, for PE classes and for, um, competition, um, but resurfacing of track is a very expensive endeavor. Uh, and that, um, that, that cost is gonna be a hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, uh, we have the PO, I have not approved the PO. My intent is that I will approve the PO tomorrow. Um, unless, um, discussion during this report causes us to, to, to slightly delay. I have learned, I think I put in a superintendent update that, um, there's not a, a, it does not meet the threshold of, of a board approval requirement for the expenditure. But I think highly functioning superintendent board teams, uh, talk through expenditures that are at this, at this level. Um, and so, uh, it is, um, expensive, but we have over a hundred students in middle school that participate in track that use that facility. We have over a hundred in high school that participate and use that facility. We have community, um, uh, community uses that track. Uh, regularly on the, in the, in the evenings and we have, I, I'm not a track person, but we have meets that involve multiple schools. Uh, and we're not able to host those. There's also a, a Bedlington Invitational that happens in the evening and all day. Um, and that has moved to Linden Christian, uh, because our inability to host, um, that, kind of, that, that, that track event. And so, um, I, I'm updating the board of, uh, intent to expend those capital project, uh, funds. Uh, and we'll continue to do so. Thoughts, comments?
The only question I have, I, I think it's great and, um, I'm glad we're doing that. Do, do either of these items, uh, is the cost that we've got there significantly higher than what we had thought they would be?
No.
Okay, good. So it, so we're not, okay.
When we estimated the track, we estimated one-twenty. Um, the increased price, uh, has to do a little bit with. Also having to redo the, um, runways for the long jump and the high jump and those areas and that wa- that weren't included on the original.
Okay.
Back. It does not get a green track, so we have a unique track that's green. Um, it will be a black, um, uh, track.
But my reason for asking that is as we move forward, I, I kind of wanna understand if there's, because we're doing this and maybe we're spending more on, on that than we thought. But then that means that something has to drop off the slate, or it sounds like we're, okay.
I will say that as someone who was hesitant, and we've, we've had this discussion before, I was hesitant about this just 'cause I didn't see that if we are going to inevitably. Build a new school and get a new track, why are we spending this money? And so, the, I think that after months of really looking at this and considering that we are servicing over two hundred students. Over the next couple of years, even best case scenario, if we were to get everything approved here as soon as possible, it won't be some time. Until, until any of these new tracks are built or, or anything like that. So I think it's, I think it's, I, I think it's money well spent and, um, I don't, yeah, I don't have any objections to this personally.
I think the, you know, Danny and I have talked about this, our director Martinez, who is in his role of facilities committee. Um, and there's, you know, we waited for the last bond event to see, you know, if, if there was gonna be passed. When it, when it didn't pass, I think we, we were under the, the thought that it would probably be three or four years before then actual. You know, not, not until we pass one, but maybe until there's an actual work that's done on athletic facilities. And so the board, board knows, the reason that there's, and the public, the reason there's discussion about, well, why would we redo it if we resurface it? Won't that be good enough? And the reality of it is, is resurfaces only lasts a little while. But the, the reasoning is, is that there are two types of track in the state of Washington. One is a long and skinny track and one is a short and stout track. And we have a long skinny track. The problem with long skinny tracks is you cannot play soccer. Uh, on the infield of a long skinny track and meet WIA requirements. And so our interest in upgrading at the high school is for as many athletic teams to be able to participate on campus so that all can participate. Which would be a conversion to a short and stubby track, uh, and then have an infield that, that allow more participation. And that's what makes it a little bit difficult in expending this kind of money, eh, with the potential of. Four years' use before the big bulldozers come in and, you know, but, and that, and so I appreciate that the thought into this. I've also put thought into that and concluded that it is, um, uh, an expenditure that, uh, we should make.
You told, you said long skinny versus, uh, short stout before and I didn't quite understand, but what you mean is the, the, the short stout means it's.
Wider.
It's the in, interiors, what, so the oval is shorter this way and wider this way, so you can fit.
Yeah.
The with, okay, okay. I thought, I, I had it, I, I think I understand it better now, so, appreciate that. I don't like soccer, so I don't really care, but no, I care.
Any other questions? Okay. Yeah, appreciate, um, uh, the update there. Superintendent, you know, it's good to have that discussion given, I mean, it's a, it's a big dollar amount, so yeah, that's, that's appreciated.
And on, uh, I've worked out with the business office, we have special coding for the things that are attached to that nine hundred and seventy-five thousand and so. Um, as we identify expenditures and make the expenditures, I'll be able to report on, um, the projects that come out of there. Kyle? You can, go ahead. This one?
Okay, is this the board workshop?
This is the board workshop.
Okay, got it. Alright, so now we, um, we're moving on to the board workshop, um, and, uh, capital facilities and so. Is Piper, I'm sorry, is Piper Sandler presenting now?
I, I'm gonna present first and then Piper Sandler's gonna present.
Alright, sounds good.
Does that sound good? Um, so board, uh, workshops are opportunities for the board to, uh, learn and, and discuss among themselves, um, uh. Items of importance and so, uh, there are two kind of presentations, uh, tonight. One of them is gonna be given by me and, uh, with assistance from, uh, Director Barar and Director Owsley. Who's been, who've been part of the participants in our capital facilities committee. As we, it's time, it's time that we, uh, we at least share with the community about what some of the, what some of the thoughts are. And what some of the steps are that are, that are being taken as, as we work through, um, some important decisions. So a little bit of a walk down memory lane, um, I'm gonna share some analysis of feedback that was from the previous elections. Uh, and follow-up discussions. Uh, I'm gonna outline some, some early steps that are being taken. And then, uh, Trevor Carlson from Piper Sandler, um, is gonna be here and he's gonna, uh, work the board, talk, talk through the, with the board. Um, tax implications and potential for, potential for cost savings, um, right? Uh, yeah, so we've been, we've been working on this for, for a little while. Um, so just a memory lane, uh, you know, there, there's really four kind of major groups that have worked. Four major documents that have come out of, 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 of work since I've been, uh, superintendent. The first is a study and survey of our facilities, it's required part of developing a capital facilities plan. And that was in August of twenty-two. In January of twenty-three, it convened a citizens group to, to review all of the previous work of our citizens groups. Around capacity and age of facilities, um, meeting our program needs. Uh, that report was given to the board with two recommendations and that was to update the long-range capital facilities plan. Which, uh, was completed in June of twenty-twenty-three and that was a twenty-plus year look at, um, our facilities and, and potential needs. Based on enrollment projections. And then in August twenty-three, um, uh, a bond planning task force completed its work. Those were twenty-one citizens, nine, yeah, twenty-one, nineteen, nineteen citizens who worked through, um, a lot of information. And Trevor came to that group and presented it as, as well. Um, that bond, um, that, that bond planning task force then. Uh, uh, in, helped make recommendations that led to two resolutions by school boards. The, the, the previous school board, um, passed the first resolution, which resulted in a bond initiative to the, to the taxpayers. That went out in February and then in G- in March or April, I think in April. This board passed a resolution to, uh, rerun out to the, the citizens. A, 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 a funding initiative, um, based on the work of the bond planning task force and, um, and the, and the board's, uh, development of, of projects. Uh, and so that was, I like to say, facilities planning leading up to the last two elections. And now what is happening in terms of facilities planning in twenty-twenty-five? And so there are three things I wanna share with the board. One is, uh, in February of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, this board needs to adopt a cap, a six-year capital facilities plan. And the reason that a six-year capital facilities plan is required is that the city and the county need to reference it. Within their required comprehensive plans. What is going on in the Linden School District? What are you anticipating in terms of enrollment? What are you anticipating in terms of, in terms of capital project and growth? Uh, and so this six-year plan, um, kind of outlines that. And within that outline, and, and you've received those from me, within, and within those, within that outline, it also identifies how you're going to pay for those. How, how you, how you intend to pay for those capital projects. Um, and so on the, 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 right now scheduled on February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Is the board adoption of the six-year capital facilities plan. And the reason we gotta wait a little bit is it also requires an environmental study, um, and that is currently being, being worked on. Okay? And so that will be a legal document adopted by the board of directors of Linden School District. It doesn't bind you to actually carry out the plan as it's presented, it's best we know at the time. And what we, best we know at the time is what the previous, your, your, you did in the resolution and what the previous board did and the bond planning res- um, um, planning task force. So we took that, we drafted a six-year capital facilities plan. In addition to that, there is that long-range plan and what has happened there is, um, I've renamed. That to be the master facilities plan and so that will be a twenty-plus master facilities plan. The intent there, that is more of an administrative document. It is a group of citizens and, and, and Director Barar and, and Director Owsley attended our first meeting this week. This week, this week. Um, and it is intended to be updated, uh, annually. What's happening with enrollment, what are some other changes that have taken place in terms of maybe elections? Um, but it also has to look out to, um, what happens if, if Pep and Creek does begin to, to develop. Are, are, is there a need for a fourth elementary school or expansion of, of, of our current elementary schools? Is there, is there property we should be looking at purchasing? Um, and, and this group then is always analyzing this and so that there's a long-range plan. Um, included in this long-range plan are some, some pretty challenging circumstances. One of them would be Judson Hall. Um, a facility on this property, um, that is, is not, does not meet ADA code, is not very friendly to ADA. Also has some safety issues with, with seismic and also is minimally serving our academic program. Are there partnerships? Are there ways in which we can upgrade? Um, is there an interest in the community, in the school district maintaining that, that, that facility? These, these are, this is a difficult question. It's difficult for cities and it's difficult for schools. It's difficult for cities and it's difficult for schools. And so that group is one that's gonna do some early discussion on that. Linden Academy Parent Partnership is growing. We have a lease that expires. Is the, is the facility for sale? Is that something that we should, should be looking at? This group is, is doing some of those, those discussions. They're not decision-makers, obviously, but they help do some of the legwork that then help inform boards um, on that. And then, and so we, we anticipate that will be completed um, in February, March of, over the next couple of months. Um, and that group's in place and, and working. And then, and then in April twenty-twenty-five, um, the, the, the next, the next group that will come together, my recommendation is, is the next iteration of the Bond Planning Task Force. And that be called a Community Solutions Team. That Bond Planning Task Force, it's excellent work, it's represented by a broad group. There's a lot of knowledge and understanding in that group, there's a lot of knowledge and understanding in that document. And so the idea of a Community Solutions Team is, is, is not a who's interested. It is a who could best help inform the most appropriate next steps for Linden School District? And can we get broad representation from people who have driven public projects? Um, have um, a forecast or grown businesses um, who maybe have a financial acumen a little bit and can, can look at, well, this may make sense, but if you can't pass it, it's gonna end up costing more if you keep, keep going. And, and so that group maybe not as gung-ho on, I've got kids in the system and I wanna get, make sure that they have a modern learning environment, more so of this is financially sound. And uh, highly recommend, you know, then would come before the board and give that report um, on what the recommendation might be in terms of what steps to take. And so that's a Community Solutions Team that um, I'm seeking um, recommendations. My plan is to meet with individuals one-on-one, talk to them about the, what expectation might be. And so I would encourage um, the board and, and those listening to, 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 to reach out if, if they're interested or if they have a recommendation of a person who would fit um, that, that, that description. So um, so that's kind of the, 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 the structure. And then what's this group gonna be talking about? So in addition to the Bond Planning Task Force report, we've got feedback, right? We've had two elections, there's messages within that election. There's been phone calls from superintendent to people. There's been discussions, a lot of people have discussions. And so, I'm gonna skip this one. And so um, uh, okay, so this is the resolution you passed. These are the big rocks that kind of were identified, right? There's still needs. I'm gonna keep moving. Uh, this was the Linden High School project that went out to voters. You know, about a hundred and thirty million for a comprehensive high school that includes a performing arts center. And expands to twelve hundred. And then, and then this is twenty-five million that was, was identified for elementary schools. We have a beautiful Fisher School that is built for five hundred and eighty. We have two other elementary schools that were built for four forty that each had nine portables on them. And so the idea there was to expand with six classrooms, six permanent classrooms in each of those uh, facilities. So that was, that was mainly the, that was the project that came out. Outcome, uh, bond initiatives failed to receive the sixty percent approval in February and August. Analysis of the feedback, so here, here, it's pretty simple. It was clear for people that they recognized that the needs are there. They wanna make sure that if there are expenditures, they're actually addressing the needs. Second one is that the presented plan for meeting those needs is too expensive. That the community was, was, is not able to support that high of an impact on taxpaying homeowners. And so we must lessen that impact. And so this is gonna be the work ahead of us. And then the third one is that aligning the district's academic program to, to, to the community's priorities is important. There's, there's interest in, in, in what's being taught, how's it being taught, where the priorities lie. And uh, and that's, that's the analysis of the feedback. Now, there are other people that voted no because they didn't like what was done with this facility or they think they were told something that, that district didn't fall through with. And we've had a lot of discussion about that. My conclusion is, is that's, that's a little bit more about not wanting to pay. Um, than it is, and, and so there, there's truths within those things, but that's, that's not the driver for why um, why the citizens in general um, did not support the project. The, the lack of support for the project was, it had too great of an impact on personal finances, on family, um, and the uncertainties of, of finances. And, and that is, and that, and we have to, we have to look to respond to that. Here's the need, uh, it's, this is what's recognized. Uh, in, in, you know, nineteen eighty, there were forty thousand, four thousand people in the city of Linden, and now there's seventeen thousand, right? We opened a Linden High School, the one that is there, we opened that high school with three hundred and fifty kids in it.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Is, is that the population of the city or is that the population of the district?
City.
This, okay, do we know the population of the district?
Uh, no. And so uh, this is of the city. And then um, and so then, yeah, we did it, we did add to the high school. Uh, so there is space that's been added to the high school since it was built for five hundred. Um, it had, there are additions, it's seven forty. Now, those common areas like the cafeteria and the hallways and the bathrooms, those were built for five hundred. We currently have nine hundred and forty uh, students registered in a high school. We typically have about nine hundred students. So again, we have, we have, we have ten camp, we have ten portables on the property, we have, we use nine. But there has been, there have been additions. The community, and from my feedback, they get this, they understand, they understand that, 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 that needs to be, that there, there needs to be, uh, it needs to be addressed. You know, I talked to a lot of Linden Christian families. And uh, my general sense is that, that Linden Christian families and retirees are gonna support meeting the needs. They, Linden Christian uh, voters understand that they are a, they are a private entity. And in a community of four thousand, they can have a thousand students. And in a community of twenty thousand, they can have a thousand students. And they can plan to decide when they want to expand and how that's, and, and so my, my, my sense was, you know, I understood that, I just wondered if voters understood that. And after talking with them, I think they understand it. And it came back to that, that impact on the individual family was just too high. And so this community has historically have, have supported public schools. Our schools have grown um, with the growth of the community. Uh, it's been difficult lately because of how quick the community has grown. And how fast that growth has, the city's also uh, challenge, uh, being challenged by that and the school district. You are a board that has probably the lowest overall tax rate in recent, any memory I have. And you have twenty-five portables. And so your challenge becomes, and, and so your challenge becomes, how do we identify what those key needs are? And how do we incrementally um, you know, increase the taxes to be able to collect those funds? Cause that is how um, uh, buildings are, are, are funded. Yeah. And so the needs are there. Two strategies, this is what I've been working on, this is what you're gonna see, you know, being worked on by our community. Strategy one is invest in architectural study and design, engineering and project phasing options. And so um, I've hired Tim Faber with King Architecture. He has gone and hired architects that have done major high schools. And uh, we've also hired a contractor. And the concept there is if we spend a little bit of investment on the front end, not designing a new Linden High School, but just understanding how a building can be expanded or replaced and what those actual costs are. And what are some of the options that we have to phase those projects? If that's what the Community Solutions Teams comes, comes back and says, hey, I think you need to phase the projects, you can't do it, you can't do the high school all at once, you gotta do part of the high school. So this group is looking at those costs and those options. And we'll meet with that Community Solutions Team to give them what I think is gonna be really good information. And that will be information for the board as well eventually.
I think, can I just say, I think, I think one of the things that we really struggled with the last time is that we had these estimates about costs, but it's really difficult to sort of nail those down and be able to communicate that in a way that, that made people feel like we really knew what the costs were. And, and it strikes me from the conversation we had the other day with Tim that we're not gonna, we're obviously not gonna get a fully designed high school and with the dollars down to the penny, but we're gonna get, I think, it seems to me that we're gonna get more information, better information that we can use to communicate our understanding of the costs i- in a way that's more, that's better. So I, I think that's important work, anyway.
Yeah, and I really intended at the beginning to say, stop me anytime and ask questions or add, jump in, but you know me, I get going, right? So, so please do interact. I, I do think this is a, a really important step and, and um, you know, this may be new news to the board that, uh, that has been going on. This is, this is part of what I think, like Ken said, one of the missing pieces. And so doing this kind of behind the scenes to then be able to come out and say, we, we've got more than just boxes. We've actually know what it costs to, to, to kind of redesign the, the inside of the Linden High School gymnasium and how many seats might be lost, right? Or we know, you know, what this, that we, we, we're able to, to say that, you know, you've got the space to be, to do this with your, your CTE programs. A CTE program to, in today's high school costs this, right? And costs that, and they have the resources and access to do that. So when we, when we come around of, of, in those charrettes where we're designing some of the things with high school staff and community members, there's a knowledge of, if somebody thinks that it'd be great to have, you know, name something, you know, um, um, three D welding. I, I won't maybe anything. There will be information that says, well, that would be a cost of.
Right.
Of, of this. We also heard a lot about Ferndale making some, some adjustments in their, in their materials that they used that saved taxpayer dollars, that, that were able to, to go to other places. And um, and so this is a group that will be able to have the knowledge of that. And so I think they're gonna be very valuable resources for our community going forward.
A question.
Yeah.
Since you were saying, open it up. So um, appreciate the fact that you went out and asked people, I mean, that's huge that you were able to get that feedback. I do have a questions about um, the feedback number three, where it said aligning this district's academic programs to the committee's priorities. Because I really felt like the last bond did that with the emphasis on the CTE programs. And, and so what, what, what did we miss there uh, in terms of, of that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I appreciate the question. We're in a, we're in a pretty politicized world right now. And, and I think this is about information or misinformation.
Got it.
About what is and isn't happening within our schools.
Okay, okay.
And we need to do a better job of communicating um, the priorities of Linden School District.
And what's being taught, is that the, we're not teaching?
Of what we see as, as a value uh, education and what we're gonna provide the, the kids.
So it's less about, it's less about the, the actual plan for the facility and more about perceived notions about what was happening.
You know, we have a majority of voters in this community do not have children or connection to Linden School District. Now, that's changed since we were four thousand people.
Right.
Right, that's the difference in this community.
Yeah.
Um, and so for those that have been in the community all along, it, it's shocking to see an anti campaign, right? Because you're used to being the majority of represented. And now, you know, the, those connected to the schools are, are with the, with the amount of retirees and the amount of cash homes that are being, you know, homes that are being purchased for cash. Uh, we have a large private school in this, in this, in this community. We need to do a better job of, of communicating our priorities. And that's where we talk about the strategic, that's why.
Sure.
The strategic plan and, and that process, I think it will contribute to um, support uh, for the capital projects.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Can I add, can I add something really quick?
Yeah.
And I, you know, as the board, we are kind of like, one of the things that we do is advocate for a district. And that could be done through what we're doing right now, when we're sending letters, right, to what's coming down from Olympia. Because I think, you know, whether or not it's, it's information or misinformation, there are definitely things coming down that are enroaching on, you know, uh, community values, community standards and whatnot. So I think there's that part to that and what we're doing are, is all in the right direction. So pretty hopeful, you know, and I think that's probably one of those things that community, you know, uh, relayed in that is how are we, you know, trying to protect our children through protecting the local control of our elected leaders? So that the educators, the executives, you know, they are better positioned to make decisions for their school district. So I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, there are definitely steps going in the right direction for that one. And appreciate the board on, on doing those.
Appreciate you add that on, and, and that's not, and that's, and when I, when I say that, kind of that, kind of the politicized one, the cultural war, those, those kind of things, that, that's one of it. And then it's like, are we preparing students mathematically to be successful?
Yeah.
Um, and, and we can now have career, uh, family, family wage jobs through the skills, through the trades. Are we, are we, have we kept up with that? Do we recognize that? All those things is what I mean by that. That, that component of aligning with the priorities. And I've, I've said that, I said that I think, I think, I think a, a good activity in, in line, in parallel with trying to address capital is trying to engage a broader community around what are those community values and, and, and priorities? And you do that through a strategic planning process. And, and so, yeah. And I, and tonight, I don't talk about strategies for, for that third one.
Right. Big topic.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so strategy one, and we kind of, we kind of already nailed. Uh, strategy two is pursue all cost reduction and alternative funding options. And so um, uh, the, the state has a, has a matching program. Uh, and there's ways in which you can maximize that, and uh, we're gonna continue pursuing those ways um, and working with experts on, on how to do that. It's all about creating new learning spaces and there's, and, and leveraging that if you, if, if you create certain kinds of spaces, they qualify for um, assistance money. And that assistance money is kept in a bank somewhere in Olympia. Uh, and when communities like Linden pass their bond, we get that money back. Uh, and that's the only way we can get that money. Uh, and so um, I wanna, we wanna try to pass a bond and we wanna try to access that assistance program money. The other thing is grants, there's seismic grants and, and energy grants, doing some work to, to see if there's a pursuit of some, some private grants. This came back through feedback that there, there was a lot of interest. I usually get a, well, do you guys, have you applied for any grants? This person got that, that person got that, so continuing to, to work on that. The third bullet is consider the collection of impact fees. And uh, that's been discussed by the board, I'm gonna share a little information on that here shortly. And then uh, bullet number four is review debt repayment options and look at how to structure, how to structure financing of school construction, and that's why Trevor is here uh, tonight. And he's gonna bring us home uh, later at the, after I'm finished. Any, any questions about this? This is, this is messaging that is intended to say, we heard you. And we're gonna do everything we can to reduce costs to taxpayers while also meeting the needs of our learners long-term and our families.
Can I kind of summarize it into three? Like I said, we heard you, we're thinking outside of the box, and how can we improve the services provided? So.
Okay, alright, so impact. Okay, all right. So impact fees. Impact fees are, are a means in which, uh, communities can collect fees from new homeowners to offset the costs of, of expanding schools.
Question. You said new homo- new homeowners. You're speaking about new construction, not first-time home buyers?
Yes.
Okay, just to clarify.
But also apartment buildings, but no, but nothing commercial, so not restaurants or grocery stores?
Good. Yeah, not, yeah, it should be broader than new homeowners. New residential units can be levied an impact fee. We, as I've said before, you request from the city, you request from the county. But is the boards, my understanding is the boards prerogative to set the amount of the impact fee to be collected as long as the amount was generated lawfully. And, and that required us to work with a lawyer over the last four or five months. And these numbers are Linden School District's impact fees capacity. And so, uh, this will be included in the six-year plan. And there are some options that we have to consider. And so the, the, the first one is single-family residents with three or more bedrooms, new. Right? You've got a plat, you've got plans, you go to get a building permit, it's got more than three bedrooms. They then say, there's also an impact fee for the school. Growth helps pay for growth. That impact fee is, and then there's an amount. So behind the curtain calculation is that single-family residents with three bedrooms, the Linden School District could ask up to $9,323 per residential house as an impact fee. It is typical in communities that that impact fee is discounted at 50%. That is your typical impact fee in a community. Take the calculation that was done, and it has to do with construction costs and it has to do with how many of these, how many, how many, how many students are generated when a new home is built in Linden? That's the generation rate. Typical is 50% discount, $4,662. A multifamily residence, so there's a duplex, a triplex, a four-story apartment building with two-plus bedrooms, that calculation is $14,073 a unit. A unit.
So per apartment?
Yeah.
So a hundred apartment unit costs whatever that number is, comes on.
And that is also typically discounted. And so that 50% discount would be $7,000. Um, we've had some preliminary discussions with, um, the city. But I think before the board, between now and February 22nd, tonight's intended to have a little discussion about this. I know it's taking some time. Is, you know, is there an interest in pursuing the collection of impact fees? And if so, what type of fee are we thinking about? So Director Brar and Director Alsie have had an opportunity to kind of process this a little bit more. They were in a meeting with another group, that long-term, that long-range planning group. And we've had some discussions, um, about this.
That's not in the packet, is it?
No.
Can I, um, but it was sent to the email, uh, the six-year facilities planning draft, if that's what you're asking.
I'm just curious if there's a hard copy here.
Question, for those like me that didn't know before, impact fees, what can you use and not use them for?
Yeah, um, impact fees can only help mitigate growth. And so you could, new construction, um, you could use it for portables. You could use it to expand, uh, an area as a result of, of growth. Yeah.
It's important to note too, like in that, in that six-year plan, there is a page that looks like something out of Star Trek, a whole bunch of calculations. But it's all driven off of the cost estimations for the new high school and the expansions of the, of the elementary schools that then takes the student generation rate, i.e. how many kids does a three-bedroom house create typically? And that's how they come up with that number. But then, it's also important for you guys to know that, that, that number that you see there, so that, that 9,000 or that 14,000, they also, that, that calculation takes into account the property taxes that that unit would pay, or that whoever owned that home would pay. So they, they take, cause I think that, I think the original number was something like, that the, the share of the cost was something like 25 or 28,000 dollars.
26 and 28,000.
Yeah, and then, and then, so then, then they reduce that to the 9,000 or the 14,000 to account for those other sort of components that whoever buys that house or whoever, you know, owns that apartment building is gonna pay. So that's how you get to the 9,000 or the 14,000. So there's, those are numbers just aren't just randomly generated. They're very specific to Linden and to our capital facilities plan and our cost estimates around those.
Do we have a plan to meet with the city anytime soon, like we did last year?
I met with the city administrator and the mayor and this, and the community development leader and went through the, kind of, to foreshadow some, some work that the, the Linden School District was doing and make aware of this discussion that was gonna be happening in public tonight. And then I'm scheduled to meet with, um, the, the committee, the facilities committee of the Linden City Council on the 22nd.
Okay. Cause I've, and this is, these are notes from April, so it might be different. But I've, I've got here that city needs to approve if, okay, so that's, and then that impact fees wouldn't be useful in the near future. Is that, can you maybe expand that?
Say that again?
That impact fees wouldn't be useful in the near future. And, and again, the, this comment that I wrote here was probably pertaining to the bond at the time. Is, is that, so are the, any of these fees things that we can use for our upcoming projects? If we potentially phase them?
Yes, I, yes. It would, I would kind of depend on, um, it would kind of depend on the, ultimately on that, that project itself. But there wouldn't be a lot of money collected by then, right? And so then you have 10 years to, to, to spend it. So it could offset some. Here is, I'll share the, I'll share what I think is, and this is just, this is just what I think. And this, this is the way I, I would maybe talk with the community about it. Is that one of the ways we can reduce the cost of Linden High School is, is build, instead of build for 1,200 students, we build for 1,000 students. We reduce the square footage by that. And we build our commons areas for the 1,200. And then we set it up to expand in, in eight years or 10 years and use the resources collected through impact fees to pay for that expansion. Reduce the, reduce the, the bond, collect impact fees, meet the needs once the growth is here. That's, that's one way of, of being able to do that.
It's, it's important to consider as you, as you think about that. So you're, you're gonna look at, um, I should have pulled it out of here, sorry. The, in, in, in this slide, in this deck is a slide that shows the assessed value. So we did, or, or not we, well, I guess the district did an analysis of, of impact fees. And what was the total amount that we thought we may have collected over that five-year period? Do you remember?
I have it in front of me.
Page 46.
And it was what?
46.
Page 46 of the packet, on the Piper Sand where it's 26.
So I'm trying to make the point here. Do you remember what that number was?
Yes. So we did a five-year, if, if this would have been our number, if we would have collected 4,662 and, um, 7,037 for, for the years 2019 to 2023, we, and we would have collected that, there, there were 345 single-family units that were built in Linden in those years. And that generated 150 students. And that would have generated, um, that would have generated $1.6 million.
So 1.6, 1.6 million dollars over a five-year period of time that saw a double-digit, uh, year-on-year saw a double-digit and over the, uh, double-digit of, uh, assessed value growth. And over that period of time, assessed value went from, I believe, 2.5 billion to, to, uh, 4.5 billion, if I remember correctly. So, uh, so almost 100% growth in that five-year period of time. From last year to this year, you'll see it on the chart as well. We've seen a assessed value growth of 2.8%, I believe, or 2.5%. So the answer to your question is, and this isn't an argument against, cause I'm for doing impact fees. This is just to make sure you understand that we have not seen the assessed value growth that we have seen in previous years. Impact fees are all about growth in actual properties. Pepin Creek is supposed to come along. We heard the other day that maybe Pepin Creek's not, it's gonna be as many houses as we thought it was. We don't know when it's gonna start. So it's important to sort of be clear-eyed about what we think is the, is the initial impact of impact fees versus the long-term impacted, impact fees. It's entirely likely that that could produce, I, I, what was the, what was the math? That I think Vist did the, some, some sort of quick calculation in the meeting the other day and figured that if Pepin Creek went in, that was something like $7 million, which is significant amount. But it's probably a longer-term thing, which is why I like, uh, the superintendent's idea of building smaller and then kind of counting on those impact fees to kind of come in behind and, and take care of that growth that the impact fees are generating.
Five years back of multi-units, there were 139 multifamily units with two or more bedrooms, generated 139 students. In our study, we actually look at the addresses of the new homes and then we look at the addresses of our students and we figure out how many there are. And that's part of this whole calculation. And that, out of that, out of that seven, if that were 7,000, that would have been a collection of 2.4 million. And so together, you know, of $4 million over that, that five years. So if growth were to maintain the same rate, um, over the next five years, we could anticipate taking in 560,000 to 800,000 dollars a year. We don't anticipate that growth to, to match the previous five years. It'll be less, it would likely be less than that. But it does align with the concept of growth in a community helps pay for growth.
And it's also, I think it's important for the board to know that that committee, everybody on that committee except for one person was a, was a thumbs up for pursuing impact fees. And the one person that was not a thumbs up was kind of a thumbs sideways. Was not entirely against it, but also kind of felt like wasn't 100% sure. The one thing that I took away from that meeting, um, uh, specifically about the impact fees is that one of the members of the committee said, you know, gosh, here we are, here we are. And, and wouldn't it have been nice if we did, if a, a, a board 10 years ago had done this? And so I say to myself, well, wouldn't it be nice if a board 10 years from now is looking back saying, it's a good thing that, that this board did that because that produces revenue that helps meet needs. So for me, it's a, it's kind of a, it's a smart move, I think. So we're, we're not prepared to make a decision tonight, but I, I'm
February 20th.
Very encouraged about.
It'd be interesting, other people's thoughts and, and questions about this, the intent of this workshop, this discussion.
Yeah, a couple of things are, are going through my, I, I mean, I like the idea. So how, how com- how common are these? Are these, would we be an outlier if we did this? Do like, have the school district, I don't know if there's an answer to that question.
Lots of schools. What is the list of school districts that are collecting impact fees?
Bellingham and Ferndale in Lockton County.
Okay.
Um, Skagit County has a number of them and then, and then larger school districts.
Down south more, even more down south, yeah.
We have a list and, and I can, just kind of, I'll share the list with the board and what they're collecting and how much.
Okay.
And keep in mind too, like Bellingham is a school, is a, is a district that seems to be able to build a thousand-student high school at the drop of the hat, because they've got such a large, right? They've got such a, they've got such a large tax base, but they still collect impact fees. You get what I'm saying?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
We're kind of, we struggle that way, but.
Is it, it's just a question. Is it possible to, is it beneficial to do a 25% discount on multi-residential and a 50 on single-residential, anticipating that we're gonna have more multi-residentials being built here in the future? Would that go? I mean, it's, it seems like that would be.
The, the, the board sets the amount, the district sets the amount that then goes in front of the, the city and the, the county. I, I do not, um, and, and because they're the entity that does the collection, that's why they have to go through the approval. I don't wanna, it's typically not, uh, they're not, they're not, they're not analyzing and taking public comments on whether they should or shouldn't in the, the impact fees. That's kind of the, that is the work of this entity to do that. Now, I'm not, may, it may not go that way, but that's, that's, my research this year has said that it kind of goes that, that way. So there is this, this opportunity for the board to kind of s- to set this for the community. And then go to the city and the county and say, and request they collect on behalf of city. And that, that may involve a negotiation at some level. But I would focus on the needs of Linden School District. And let them give input based on, um, you know, back in the day, it was kind of like, we don't want a slow development. We want, we want development to happen in the city so the city can grow, right? We have some goals that we gotta meet to grow. And, and I think, I think that's common in cities. It, it just puts school districts in a really difficult place because the funding, the funding structure is that we have to get residents to, to support it by a supermajority. And, and not everybody understands the, the stresses that fast growth happens. Hello, I, 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 I think that, I think it's open, Dan, Director Martinez, for, for you to kind of, kind of process through this, kind of talk with resi- or citizens. You know, there are, there are, is it gonna impact builders? Is it gonna impact, you know, is it gonna impact subcontractors in our, in our community? If, if fees get out of line, you know, we, I think, I think contractors and, and, and people in the industry are gonna complain about increases, um, no matter what it is. Uh, and then they're gonna operate within them. And that could have an impact on how affordable it is to live in Linden. And, and we might be contributing to that, that challenge some. And, and so this is, this is an important determination. I think when we get it out there, hopefully the community comes and gives some, some insights as well, but.
I'm just curious what other districts do, like where they're at in percentage. Because if I'm a multi, if I'm building an apartment building, I know that typically people like my daughter who live in an apartment don't have extra funds. And that's why they're living in apartments.
Yeah. I will, I, I'll, I'll give you the, the kind of the rundown on it. We did process a little bit of why, why is Bellingham's apartment, the multifamily went so low? And it, it came down to where they, they, they spit out that 26,000, 28,000, and they subtract discounts. And it's, and the subtraction for, um, property taxes in Bellingham on apartment units subtracted a high amount, amount, cause I think there's a lot of them. And in Linden, there's not as many, they're, they're definitely, they're growing, but it didn't subtract as much as a credit. And that is why that number ended up higher. But, but Director Martinez, I will, I will get those, that data to you, to, to the full board, you know, between now and February 20th.
I mean, it is important to remember that these numbers are, you know, somebody builds a house in Pepin Creek and they're gonna pay whatever that number is. And they're gonna wrap it into their mortgage and it's just gonna be a component of cost. For then, when they build their house, like they build a three-quarter of a million-dollar house, which sounds crazy even to say it, but it's the reality.
Sure.
That what's, what's 4,600 or what's $7,000 in that? But certainly in the multifamily residents, again, that's some builder that's building that, they're gonna pay that. But of course, they're gonna pass it on to their renters, so.
How many units is that, that place, for the tracker supply, the new one they're building?
I heard it was 54 or 56. I can't say, don't quote me, cause I'm being recorded in a public meeting, but that's what I heard.
One takeaway from that meeting that we had, I think it was Monday, I can't remember which day of the week, but, um, we had former Board Director Steve Jelk here, um, you know. Is it okay if I quote you? Okay. Yeah, so the discussion of impact fees, you know, has been, has happened prior as well, you know, in, in the past. And I think the has happened prior as well, you know, in in the past. And I think the notion of, you know, it's not going to bring so, you know, that much of a money or that much difference, you know, now we look back ten years and we're looking at the data and, you know, it's very different. So that that's also one thing to kind of consider that when we are asked to think outside of the box, you know, this, this is one of those things. And later on, we'll discuss about, you know, the refunding of the bond, you know, that's kind of like another drop in the bucket. And yeah, I'm just very thankful and in awe of the things that are, you know, surfacing in terms of, again, the other outside of the box thinking about the architectural aspect of how do you, you know, expand the phasing and whatnot. So certainly I'm a pro for this, but yeah, just kind of wanted to share that thing as well, because it also occurred to me, you know, like, what's the, yeah, yeah. But then I I heard that, you know, from from a former Board Director as well, when those things were said in the past. So that's just one thing, another to consider that, you know, we do have forecasts, but we don't really know how it's gonna.
Just be clear eyed about this for the whole board, just be clear eyed about that, right? We we saw unprecedented growth, huge growth in London that we hadn't seen before.
Right.
And that growth has slowed way down, and that growth may come back, and it may not, it may come back, it may come back really slow. But the nice thing is, I I don't know if it's a nice thing, but if the growth is really slow, these impact fees, they don't, they may, they don't generate as much, but they also don't have as much financial impact. If the if the growth is, if the growth is ramps way up, then the opposite of of that is true. It's just, I think, I think it's super important to to be realistic about what we think the next. I'm absolutely pro this. I think I think we should do it, but I don't, I I don't want us to be over optimistic about that, what that growth is going to play.
I've got a note here. Can you clarify, since the district has to spend ten years, spend that within ten years? Is that, that's? Yeah. So if something is collected in twenty twenty five, let's say a hundred thousand is collected, that hundred thousand needs to be spent twenty thirty five. Okay. And so every year, there's another ten year window. The idea is that it is, it is built up and expended in in some time. So you got, somebody's got to track that as well. And and back to your question about the city, so the the next steps would be after February twentieth, the board adopts the capital, the six year capital plan, it would include an amount collect to collect for impact fees as part of that plan. Then that requires us to approach the city formally and requesting a collection of of impact, impact fees. And then, and then, and the same for the county. The the current London City does not have an ordinance in place that allows for collection of school impact fees. They would have to pass an ordinance and then, and then, and then, and then approve the amount that we're suggesting to to collect. And the county already has ordinance, they would just have to begin adding that to their their permitting process. There are two ways to collect. You can collect at the plat, the time of plat, so a a property owner is going to subdivide and make make building plats. You can collect half of it then. The, and so so the impact fee is is felt by that develop, that that person that's selling their property. And then when the, when the developer comes along or the person buying the plat that was going to build a home, then the second half of the impact fee could be levied on on them or or any combination like that. So there are some other things that that would need to be worked through in this process as well. I would say the the first collection of of impact fees, just based on the, my understanding right now, is that the first impact fees, a good target for that, if they do get passed and they go through the different steps, would be January of twenty twenty six.
Okay. Quick process question, dumb question. Can the city say no?
I'm not going to answer that question. I I I think the answer is probably yes.
Okay.
Meaning at at, you know, they're elected, they they have to, they have to pass an ordinance and and I think they would have the authority to be able to do that.
Okay, okay. Now, just.
Superintendent, can you, can you just, when you send that information, can, I'm just curious to see what Ben Thomas thinks about all this. What are his recommendations or how does he think it affects us in a negative or positive way?
He, yeah, I could share it just publicly if you want, but he he was, he was in the meeting that we were in on Monday, he was a, he's a thumbs up.
He's a thumbs up.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, and I think Steve Joke's point was that he was being told that ten years ago that there was not going to be a lot of growth in London. And then that board kind of was like, well, it may impact development, it might slow that down. And and that was kind of the driver of that. Well, you never know what's going to happen. And so we may be saying that Pepin Creek is slow, but we just never know.
You never know, yeah.
And so when's the best time to plant a tree? Back when Steve Joke was on the board.
Only we could go back in time.
But we're not there now, and so.
We just don't know. But it it strikes me, this really strikes me as something that is not going to solve any of our immediate problems, but has the potential to solve problems down the road. And so it is, to me, the right thing to do to lay a foundation so that somebody's not saying, when's the best time to plant the tree back when Jim and Ken and Chris and Danny and Tony were on the floor.
And it's a good opportunity for us to communicate with the community that we hear the concerns, the financial concerns, and we're making steps maybe that won't impact them in the immediate, but are certainly going to impact in the future.
Yeah, and likely won't impact most current voters unless they choose to build a, build or buy a new home.
I think a lot of people here, they're, we have a lot of legacy people in London. And as I thought about the school board appreciation, and I look at all those names, your father, and so many other people, I think that within our community, there's so many people that are future minded. So I hope that people will resonate with that, that we might, it might not affect us now, but for my children and their children, it will.
All right. Are we ready for Piper Sandler?
We are.
All right.
Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. Appreciate it. My name is Trevor Carlson. I work for Piper Sandler. We have served as a bond underwriter for London School District for decades. Personally, I have been at meetings and talked about bond planning for twenty years with London School District. So again, pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. As Superintendent Vander Yat mentioned, please, let's have an engagement. If you have questions, please stop me. I want to answer questions. I think Director Owsley mentioned earlier, foundation, building a foundation. This is part of that foundational knowledge, right? Making sure everyone is on the same page. And we're all about transparency. We're about numbers, facts, mathematics, okay? And we'll talk about some concepts and and again, twofold conversation tonight. We'll start off first with talking about a refunding opportunity, which in the bond lingo means refinancing, so I might use those terms interchangeably. But we're talking about a bond refinancing for the bonds that are outstanding, the the series two thousand fifteen bonds. And then we'll dive into some of the details around bond planning. And we have some scenarios that are projections, by no means, and of course, are these decision making points tonight. These are mathematical equations and concepts that allow us to talk about things that we can kind of push and pull to make sure we're putting the right package together for an anticipated or possible future funding ask from the voters. Okay? So again, all all projections and just knowledge transfer. So we'll start off with the bond refunding opportunity. Got a couple slides on that topic. Very similar analogous to refinancing a mortgage or a car loan, except it's a little bit more complicated, quite a bit more zeros on the transaction, much larger. And there's some implications with the IRS and tax law, okay, that make it a little bit different. But again, high level refinancing. So a couple of the reasons, we want to talk about reasons why, and then what are the benefits and why now is really an important question. So this provides debt service savings, so payment reduction, if you will, principal, or excuse me, interest cost savings by lowering the borrowing cost on outstanding bonds. Okay? That's the first point. Number two, the current interest rate environment, even though interest rates have increased fairly rapidly since the Federal Reserve decreased the overnight lending rate between banks in December, it, the interest rate environment does create an opportunity to realize these anticipated interest cost savings. And I'll show you the, some of the mechanics behind that. To be clear, these are savings that offset future tax collections. So this is a pure savings to property taxpayers. This has nothing to do with your general fund. These are not dollars directed back to the district for utilization in programs or anything else. Pure savings to the taxpayers. Okay? Want to make sure we're crystal clear on that. I think the bullet point exhibits positive stewardship regarding taxpayer resources. There's potential savings. It, I think it behooves us to have a discussion whether or not that's something you would like to move forward on. And why now? Tax law in the current state, it changes over time. Tax Cut and Jobs Act changed how tax law worked. The Tax Reform Act of nineteen eighty six was a major change. So every once in a while, these things change. As of now, tax law allows the utilization of tax exempt bonds to be used in a refunding, a refinancing transaction within ninety days of the optional redemption date. So there's a, there's a lot of lingo I'm throwing out there. I promise we'll bring it back and I think you'll understand. If not, raise your hands and we'll get you there, okay? And so really what that means is the best tool in your toolkit is available now. Okay? Sorry for the small print, you know, a couple of these slides. Hopefully, if you have them electronically, you can blow them up on a PDF later. This is a snapshot of the transaction of the outcome from the bond sale, from the first set of bonds that we sold from the voter approval in two thousand fifteen. Twenty one point five two million dollars worth of principal amount was sold. And the, this, this is on the inside cover of the disclosure document or the official statement. Okay? Think of that as your, the prospectus we utilized to communicate the financing to potential investors back in two thousand fifteen. The maturity schedule shows, and and think of a a bond issue as multiple loans packaged into one bigger transaction. So the fifth, the the twenty one point five two million was comprised of the dollar amounts in the second column over. And each of those has a maturity, basically year one through year twenty. Okay? So think of those as each as an individual loan. The bonds separated and highlighted and below the the blue bar there are callable bonds. So when you sold bonds originally to investors, and this is where things differ from a mortgage, the bonds that came due in the first ten years were not callable. You did not have an ability to buy those bonds back from investors at face value. So there was no prepayment option. Okay? So that's the, that's a one major difference in the bond world versus just kind of a standard loan. And this is a very standard term. Ninety nine percent of school district bonds sold in the state of Washington or in other localities across the nation will have a ten year optional call. And what that means is basically within ten and a half years of the sale date, and there's some IRS kind of safe harbors around ten and a half years, those bonds in December of twenty five out through thirty four, you told investors, hey, I'm going to sell these bonds, but I have the option on June first of twenty twenty five to buy those bonds back from you, whether you like it or not, at face value. That gives us the refinancing opportunity. And so in this world, we would issue new bonds at lower borrowing costs, use those proceeds to pay off the higher borrowing cost bonds that are on the books today. That's how the mechanism works. Okay? And that's why the timing is really important. The best tool in our toolkit, tax exempt bonds, at this point in time, is something we can utilize to make this happen. Okay? I'm going to pause.
Trevor, a quick question.
Yes.
Ten, the first ten years are not callable. Is that part of when you first negotiate with investors? Is that, is that part of the, okay, all right. Or is it, it's not law, it's just part of your negotiation?
Yeah, it's part, so you theoretically, you could make all the bonds non callable.
Okay.
Or you could make them callable at any time.
Right.
Or year one, two, three, four, five. So anything in between.
Right.
From zero to all of them non-call. Part of the the dynamics in issuing debt is, think about it from the perspective of of a district, whether it's water, sewer, city, county, state, school district.
Right.
You're creating a product.
That's right.
You're selling a product to investors, they're buying something from you.
Right.
How do you make that product as appealing as possible? Sometimes making covenants, terms and conditions standard facilitates the, really the the efficiency of the product. And that standard ten and a half year call is, what, it said standard, just by nature of of me describing this for a long period of time, just gives investors comfort and their their usual knowledge, right? And it creates efficiencies in the sale process.
Okay.
Yeah, great question.
Okay.
So that's, that's what's on the books today, except for the bonds that you've already paid off. The refinancing goals, I'll kind of hit this relatively quickly, but refund the callable maturities in twenty five through thirty four. Obviously, securing low interest rates is the name of the game. And you're selling what we classify as new bunny bonds, which the two thousand fifteen and sixteen bonds were, they were issued as brand new to be utilized for new projects to go build things. There's other goals associated with that, right? You can think of the the amount of proceeds, tax rate management, how we build the pattern, which we'll talk about on phase two of the discussion. So securing low interest rates, utilize tax exempt bonds, request acceptance to the Washington School Bond Guarantee Program. It's a very simple application, very low cost. It allows you to utilize the state's credit rating, which is triple A, the best. And think of that in in lay, layperson's terms as a cosigner, where for any reason you were not able to make the payments, the state would step in and make the payments on your behalf. That's security. Investors in these types of products in bonds like security, that drives borrowing cost down, right? It's your high FICO score. Pursue a Moody's rating. Your existing rating is A one, strong investment grade rating, that again, will drive borrowing costs to a level that shows some economic savings and benefit to taxpayers. Kind of getting down into the weeds, you've already set the levy for twenty twenty five. So why put savings there? Because the levy set, you're collecting X from taxpayers to for to service, debt service, why put savings there? All that would do is drive up the balance in your, in your debt service fund. So that's kind of really technical things that Ben Thomas and I would be talking about behind the scenes. And then depending on what your debt service fund looks like, if it is, you know, relatively large, this can give us the ability to draw it down at this point in time, right? There's, you don't want to hold too much in that fund. And that would be an analysis that again, Ben and Superintendent Vander Yat and I would discuss. So interest rates.
Trevor, can I?
Yeah.
Just you skipped over that first bullet. I just want to reinforce that.
Sure.
Because a lot of people think of refinancing and then we can't think of our home. This does not extend the years.
It does not. State law, so bonds are relatively complicated, even though school district bonds like this are plain vanilla in our world. There, we're, we're, we're playing in three realms of law. State law, and I'll circle back to why I mentioned this, securities law, right? SEC has jurisdiction over, not you, but me as an underwriter, so I have to, you know, abide by certain rules. And tax law, right? We've talked about some of those tax law implications. State law says that you cannot, you must have positive savings. State law says that you cannot, you must have positive savings in every calendar year. So that definition, and I'll show you in detail what that means from a mathematical perspective in a second. You were, you cannot extend your mortgage, the existing debt. So the, the, the new. Bonds that would be issued at lower borrowing costs would not exceed. December one of twenty thirty four. Yes, you're not kicking the can down. Yes, wonderful question. Interest rates. We've seen an increase in interest rates over the last year. This is a, just kind of a representative. Index of tax exempt interest rates, just to show a general trend. You know, with massive fiscal and monetary stimulation during two thousand twenty, twenty one. Interest rates hit all time lows as we're going through a normalization process and the Fed. Was really aggressive in fighting inflation, interest rates increased. So I'll show you, even though that curve is kind of up and to the right in the one year snapshot. The amount that you could borrow today versus what is on the books today does still create savings. Just to. Display, you have the fifteen bonds, the sixteen bonds. There, we can have the same discussion. For the sixteen bonds, but not until I would say springtime, maybe summer of twenty twenty six. Because tax exempt bonds could not be utilized until ninety days prior to. December one of twenty six, which would basically be, let's just say, Labor Day. Okay, so we can, we will analyze that as we move through time.
Trevor, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
On the back on the interest rate.
Sure.
I, I think I know the answer. I'm gonna ask it anyway, just to be sure. In chatting with former board members. And they've asked me, well, why, why are you doing this now? And interest rates are going up. Is it a true statement that what we're really, what really drives the savings is the comparison between. Interest rates now or, or what they potentially will be in June to what interest rates were in twenty fifteen? That's what generates a saving. It's not the fact, I mean, it'd be nice if this, if, if these bonds were callable in December of twenty nineteen. Cause there'd be even more savings, right?
Yes, yes. In some districts. Utilize taxable bonds during, you know, that window where rates were very, very low. Pros and cons, right? It's. The, the decision. Isn't, this isn't entirely true, but again, I'm gonna go back to the metaphor of the mortgage. Right? If you've ever refinanced anything, there's, there's not a science behind it. There's gonna be a gut feeling. Do I believe that going through the effort and the cost? Generates enough savings that I'm comfortable locking that in? What feels right? And is it significant enough that if interest rates do decrease? That I'm not kicking myself with hindsight being twenty twenty?
Right.
Right? Cause if I knew the answer, I would come to you when I had the right answer and we would time this.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know what is happening.
Try to do that next time.
Right, yeah, well, I'll work on that.
Okay, so then let me ask you one more question.
Yeah.
And then I'll, I'll try not to ask you more questions.
I'm here.
Cause I ask you a million questions all the time. So these bonds were callable at ten years. So you, we, we couldn't have bought them back and resold them until ten years.
Correct.
But the use of. Tax exempt bonds to do that, that's that ninety day window. That's not really related to the ten, ten year. It's just the fact that there's ten years and ninety days before that you can use taxes in.
Yeah, so, so prior to the Tax Cut and Jobs Act of. Oh, I should, I should know the date. I believe it was two thousand seventeen. December of seventeen. It took away one of the tools in your toolkit to refinance bonds. Think of tax exempt bonds as a legal tax loophole. Right, you, it's a buyer of these bonds, you receive a periodic income stream.
Yeah.
Called a coupon. That coupon income that you receive is not taxable. So what does that mean from the IRS perspective, federal government perspective? That's a draw on the coffers. So if the Congress and the President did away with tax exemptness. That would be a net positive to receipts to the treasury. You see where I'm going? There's push and pull. There's never a right or a wrong answer. One of the tools was taken away out of your toolkit. Which was you could use tax exempt bonds in advance of the call date. So in the olden days.
Oh, I see, okay.
We would. Most likely have refinanced these bonds. If tax exempt bonds were available. You know, pandemic-ish, post pandemic, when rates were super, super low. Using tax exempt bonds. But that tool was taken away.
Okay.
Now you can use tax exempt bonds, let's just say, there's that ninety day piece. Let's just say at the call date for simplicity. Okay, so when that call date comes around. So you're not the only one that has a June one twenty five call date. I'm working with lots of districts right now to tee us up to get ready to. To refinance and call old bonds, issue new bonds at lower levels. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah. I feel like every question I ask, you answer, I understand a little bit more, but then I always feel like there's more to ask, but I'll. Let it go.
Okay.
Well, you mentioned there's other districts that you're working with. So how common practice is? This specific, like refinancing your bonds?
It's.
Is there ever, I'm sorry, I'm gonna add this.
Yeah, no, please do.
Is there any, is there ever a time where districts are like, oh, shouldn't have done that?
Well, hindsight's twenty twenty.
Right.
Right, or can't, right, can be. Part of the. So I can't answer, do they have regrets? Is kind of where you're going. I'm putting words in your mouth a little bit.
Or just, I mean, more so is it like, is this, is it really common?
It's very common. There is not. There are not very, very many bonds out there that I have not issued and then refinanced. Because these opportunities come up to save the taxpayers, again, this is across the entire district, a million dollars. It's usually hard for someone like yourself to say, let's not do that.
Right.
There, there are downs, I mean, there are, there's costs for everything in life. David and Ben, they're gonna be on my speed dial and they're gonna need to do some things that I tell them to do in a very nice way. To get us through the process, right? There's lots of steps. There is some activity on your end, if you decide to do this, by passing a resolution. So there's a little work on your end. There are service providers besides myself that are engaged in this process. So there are, there are dollar costs. But what I will hopefully describe to you is this is a very efficient refinancing. It has. Even if interest rates increase further. It's most likely a go. But there is a point where if the savings, just like refinancing your house. If I'm gonna go through all this process, like a dollar's a dollar, you should save a dollar, right? But do I want to go through all this effort and pay points and all the things to refinance my house to save a buck? So that's, we'll, we'll talk about that. And if I don't, call me out, okay? This is where the rubber meets the road a little bit here. I displayed the two thousand sixteen bonds because I wanted to show you the difference, the tool in the toolkit. I tried to highlight. Tax exempt, taxable. Taxable bonds don't, do not have the tax exemptness of, you receive an income stream, you're gonna pay taxes on it. You're gonna put it on your, 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 your tax liability. It's gonna be, become part of your tax liability. So those bonds, the refinance opportunity does not work. Another reason is. The average coupon or the cost of your existing debt. This line here. Is much lower in two thousand sixteen. The market. Was markedly different, fifteen to sixteen. You locked in a three point four nine percent mortgage. Taxable bonds are significantly higher than that at five point two seven. Red numbers in accounting are usually not favorable, negative. So that one may be an opportunity. We'll keep track of it. I'll call you and I'll let you know. But much less efficient. So let's focus on the middle column. Again, the fourteen point four oh five is the amount of principal. That we can refinance, again, not extending the maturities, going out through thirty four. Five percent existing debt, call date June one of this year. Par is at face value.
That's the, that's the sum total of these, these numbers right here. Okay.
The projected refunding, like this changes every day, right? The, the. Tax exempt municipal bond market changes every day, just like the Dow Jones does, right? So. You know, by the time I hit print on this, get it to you a week in advance, it's old news. But it's close. So at the point where we ran this analysis, the true interest cost, think of that as the annual percentage rate. I take the new bonds, those ten maturities, add them all up, use a time value of money calculation. That's your one number cost for the new debt, three point five two. The difference between five and three and a half equals net present value savings, nine hundred ninety one thousand dollars. The bottom number is really an efficiency factor, if you will. Most school districts, if that percentage. This present value divided into how much we're paying off. Is three percent or more, that's kind of that gut. This makes sense. It's significant enough, two percent, some number. Where the savings are significant, the press release is utilized and the, then the. Taxpayers start seeing the savings over time. Okay, two, three percent. In some situations, we use a one percent threshold. Usually that's when a district already has existing authorization. They're selling the new money bonds to go build things. So you're going to do a transaction no matter what, pair the refunding together, there's no incremental cost. Right? You're already doing the work. So you can have a lower threshold. Because once you get past this call date. That's an opportunity, right? Once you pass your opportunity, you're accruing. Five percent cost, five percent cost until you refinance. So everything being equal, if interest rates stay the same forever, if you decide not to do this now, you do it in two years. You've paid five percent interest for two years when you didn't need to. Right? You lost out on that opportunity. So time is not your friend. Interest rates are your friend if they're going down. But time is not in this situation because of that, that finite opportunity. This ties into Superintendent Vander Yacht's point of not extending the maturities. So what this shows is debt service means principal and interest payments. Old, new, differential, the differential in annual. There cannot be negative numbers in the blue box. Why, Trevor? Did you tell me the savings could be, you know, as of, as of this analysis, nine ninety one? Now you're telling me one point two. Time value money. A dollar today is worth more than a dollar in the future. So that stream of cash flow is, is discounted basically at your cost of capital. So a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in savings. Divided into your, your large tax base of, we're projecting our preliminary value for twenty five. Is five point four billion. Everything's in dollars per thousand, so let's divide by a thousand. That could mean about two cents in savings in millage rate or tax rate. Okay, just to put in perspective. Or on a six hundred thousand dollar house. You know, fourteen bucks a year in savings. So again, it's, it, your tax base is big, you know, a million plus in savings sounds significant, but you've spread it over a very large tax base. When it boils down to the person, it, it becomes a lot smaller. Yes, Director.
These, the, so the. The six one, the twelve one, the six one, the twelve one, those are those every six month payments to the investor that. We chatted about in that email between you and Ryan on, right? That's what that represents.
And that's why, so as you pay off principal. Principal times five percent becomes smaller and smaller over time. So that's why there's only fifty grand of interest here. That's interest only. But all of the bonds, five percent times all of these bonds equals, you know, three hundred grand up at the top.
Yeah, 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 okay, thank you.
Yeah, a little bit of an amortization, amortization like your mortgage where, you know, more principal and this scenario is getting paid off. Later. And the method behind the madness, back in fifteen and sixteen, we had a plan, right? We were trying to, we, we created a tax rate pattern that was desired, communicated to the community. And that was part of the, the puzzle. So I mentioned a resolution. If you decide you are interested in moving forward with this. The, the task or the opportunity for you is to look and. Consider a bond delegation resolution. It creates guardrails, parameters that we would need to hit. Obviously, the most important one is the savings target. That's laid out in, in, in law based upon your actions. And then that delegates the authority. For Ben Thomas, David Vander Yacht, to move forward within those parameters. Tell me, give me my marching orders and make it happen, if we can hit it. If we can't hit the parameters, we don't move forward. If there's interest in changing parameters, we would consider, you would consider a resolution. But usually that doesn't happen. If things go in a direction against us, we don't hit a savings target, we put the work we've done on the shelf. Nine plus times out of ten, we wait, interest rates come back at some point and we make it happen.
These are, you say possible delegation requirements, but these are kind of your recommended, right?
Yeah, yes, I mean, two percent, three percent. I put two percent, just, and I showed you the present value savings. You know, it's, it's about three hundred grand. So that's part of the discussion tonight. If, if there's a unofficial. Again, if you want to move forward, we can get a resolution put together by your legal team. At the date that you're so interested in considering it. And then putting the parameters in place, right? These would be the guardrails. So, for example, minimum two percent savings. You know, there's, there has to be a, an expiration date. There has to be not to exceed principal, not to exceed interest costs, things of that nature. So we would, again, the guardrails, because it is delegation. It gives staff authority to move forward.
If you answer this, and I was deep in thought, what would be the expiration date? Like if you made, if you draft a resolution that passes.
Right.
How, how far in the, how long do you have before you put it into practice?
Uh, you, we would, I mean, it, in this case, you know, by the end of the year, could be it. Or twelve months from now, or twelve months from adoption.
Okay.
Just some time that's relatively significant for us to, in case interest rates do increase and we don't hit a target. It gives us time to, to work on it and come back when the opportunity is ripe. But it depends on what you want. It's your choice.
So this action doesn't have to be done by June. It could be done in August.
Yes.
It just can't be done before June.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sorry, yes. Technically ninety days before June first.
No, right, I, I thought you had to sort of, because they're callable at ten years, that you had to do it at ten years. And if you didn't do it at ten years, you couldn't do it. It just has to be done.
Question.
Okay.
You have the option to ex, you, that option you can exercise at June first or after.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
That's a great clip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
I guess, so when, when would we ideally wanted, say, we wanted to do it around you, when would we do this resolution? I mean, is that?
I made up a schedule, again, oh, I'm sorry, this is, no. I've done this a couple of times. I anticipate the questions. Again, this is, this is me. I made this up, no direction, there's no pressure, this is not a sales pitch. These, these are the things that would have to happen. The timeline is up to you. For example, we could have. The timeline is up to you. For example, we could have, uh you consider a delegation resolution on February sixth or whenever. But let's just pretend this is the schedule. Uh we would hold that uh conference call with Moody's Investor Service to allow them to do the due diligence they need to do to to uh uh give us a rating, update the rating, uh some internal work, due diligence uh with the lawyers and myself, post a preliminary official statement, that is, the offering document, right, that that's when my team starts dialing for dollars and getting ready to lock in, think of, think of the next step as locking in the mortgage.
Right.
And then closing, right?
Got it.
When you lock in the mortgage, there's a ton of things to sign, remember, your hand cramps up, there's a lot of paperwork. Uh so we give the lawyers, you know, a couple, two, three weeks to to work um uh with Board President Superintendent to execute all the documentation.
And that's kind of your best case scenario, earliest timing, is at the next board meeting, we sign a, we adopt a resolution, and then all that stuff takes place.
Yes.
Okay, and then, and it's
April nineteenth is uh within that ninety day window.
Yeah, I I assume so, yeah, without looking at the calendar. And then um and then, I mean, all, again, like you said earlier, all things being equal, interest rates staying sort of where they are, the sooner we do it, the better, because the more money we save.
Correct.
Less uncertainty.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, that savings would start in twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
If it was, if it was
Yes.
point four cents.
And 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 always remember, when we talk bonds, we're talking tax collections in calendar year, not August thirty-first.
Correct.
Right, that's always a mind shift with schools.
They re, they recalculate the 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 mill rate.
Yes.
Uh and this calculation would be included because now the 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 debt has been lessened.
But in theory, in theory, correct me if I'm wrong here, but in theory, if you did do this and you did close in April, in theory, then Waukesha County collects more property tax from April to December than they really should have because we refinanced. But they, but they shore that up on the other side, right?
Well, I would structure the new lower cost bonds to not have savings in twenty, in calendar twenty-five because of that reason.
That's why the minus one ninety-one.
Yeah. Yes, and again, I'm I'm focused on calendar year.
Yeah, no, I understand, I was just asking that as a clarification question, okay, okay, great.
That's right, because you've already set that dollar amount.
Yeah.
If I put savings in that year, you're quote unquote over collecting.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about.
And so you're just building up your savings account, AKA debt service fund.
Right, which you want to, okay.
There's just not really a benefit to.
Sure, there's no, yeah, yeah.
And on the margins, reduces. Again, margins, tiny margins, reduces overall savings. But again, those are mechanics behind the scenes.
Yeah.
So yes, if if you're interested, Superintendent can get the process started, we could have a resolution to you at your discretion. Superintendent Vander Yacht, anything I missed you want me to touch on on the refinancing, refunding opportunity?
No, just as long as everybody understands that there's parameters, and if those parameters don't match, then we won't go forward.
It's no go, it's against the law and we can't do it.
Yeah, that was, that was, I was gonna ask the question about timing and interest rates, and what happens if we do, if we decide to go forward, then the interest rates do something, but that is moot because of that, of the parameters, which is great.
If something internally makes it so February sixth becomes challenging for us, it would become February twenty, and I would anticipate that everything would be dropped down a week.
Exactly.
To be able to get there.
And we don't have to do a new resolution because we're gonna put a sort of expiration date on it.
Yeah, yes.
All great stuff, I think.
Yes.
I would just ask if any board directors already are comfortable with us possibly doing this next board meeting?
Comfortable or uncomfortable?
Uncomfortable. No, a resolution?
I think we should do it. It's my opinion.
All right. Okay, I'll let you confer with your CEO and he will give me direction at his leisure. Uh okay, switching gears, we've got two gears, we're in first hour and second, guys hanging in there with me?
Maybe make up a little time.
I know.
There is background information on this one, that was all new learning.
That was all new learning, yes.
There is some background information on this one.
Trying not to ask so many questions.
So rein you in. So, some of these slides are there for your reference, then I'm gonna go over them fast, you have them, right? You can refer to them later. This is one of them. But there are four opportunities throughout the calendar year for you to ask for funding measures. February, April, August, November, use this as your milestone planning, right? That's your end, one of your end goals. Start backing up when resolutions are due and when ballots are mailed, and then when elections are certified. So if that dates out through twenty-seven, they really don't change that much, depends on a leap year and, right, they're it's usually Valentine's Day-ish in February. Uh I'm not gonna spend too much time on this, uh Superintendent Vander Yacht, I think uh hit a lot of key points in his discussion, and there sounds like there's some movement on the planning piece. It just does take a lot of time, as you know, right? There are a lot of things to consider, thinking about the different options, phasing, not phasing, all the things that.
I think it's important to point out to the board here, though, that that really represents the earliest that we could really feasibly put a another bond on the ballot, is that that timeline right there. I'm not I'm not suggesting that we do that, I'm just saying that as you think about it, you should understand that's probably the earliest, which really represents the one, two, three, four, fifth line on that previous slide. So if you're thinking about timelines. Do you disagree?
Uh yeah, maybe. But this discussion hasn't been had, I do think that there is the time that would allow the earliest to be in November of twenty twenty-five, and that's not a recommendation. I do think, though, that I've been speaking about options and including that one um as an option. As November of twenty twenty-five, February twenty twenty-six, April twenty twenty-six, August twenty twenty-six, November.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So that would give you essentially, you know, between now and August fifth.
Yes, yeah, so that, that's the primary date, so right, it's, it's condensed.
So to hit, to to put a ballot measure in November twen- of twenty twenty-five, there would need to be a resolution passed by the board in August five of twenty twenty-five, and the work that we're doing is intended to allow that window to be potentially met by by that community solutions team coming before the board in April.
Hmm, okay, yeah, that's a great point. I really just wanted to point out that there is this timeline that you have to sort of project, and so that's a valid point, I agree.
And that 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 does not indicate that there is any indication that that's the ideal time, or that's the target.
Right, a hundred percent, yeah.
Started that process, yeah.
Sorry, I said I wasn't asking questions.
This is your workshop, uh we're here to support you. Um page twelve, uh bond passage rates by opportunity, those four opportunities, February, April, August, November. The bottom portion looks at uh passage rates by calendar year, long, long-term average, thirty-nine percent of any bond on the ballot passes, right, so let's say that's forty percent-ish. Uh sixty percent are not successful, so the last few years have been under the long-term historical passage rate, twenty-eight percent in twenty twenty-four. Uh same type of information for operating levies, you were successful recently, so I will skip over this slide. Same uh kind of concept, capital project levies pass at fairly high levels, uh especially since the simple majority uh was put into place in two thousand eight. And I apologize for the kind of the jumbling of the numbers, especially on the bottom, they're not totally lining up with the columns, a little presentation transfer there that didn't work. Hopefully on your piece of paper, it's okay. Uh and the details on page fifteen and sixteen of what actually happened at the bond ballot box all across the state. The uh the lighter rows with the highlighted darker print are the passages. And uh in November, Port Angeles, Sumner, Bonnie Lake, Cheney, and Union Gap were successful. Okay, again, data that you have at your fingertips now. Uh kind of in that same vein, uh page seventeen, your passage rates for operating levies and the dollar amounts approved by the voters. Bond passage rates and amounts requested at the top of page eighteen, and capital project levies at the bottom. Uh there was talk earlier, and I don't recall who brought it up, but tax rates. So all of your millage rates are dollars per thousand going back to two thousand two. Again, think of these not in a vacuum, just on the page. We have to also think about these in light of assessed value, right? A dollar tax rate on a small assessed value generates a smaller number than a dollar tax rate on a very big assessed value. So tax bill is important in this conversation too, also. And when we look at the the I chart models towards the end of my presentation, I'll highlight a couple of columns that emphasize the dollar impact to the community, not just tax rate. There's not a a one size fits all communication device, but tax rate is by far the most common and probably the most useful because, you know, you all live in the community, your home values are different. So it's difficult for me to say your tax bill will be X and yours will be Y. If I can give you a tax rate, you can multiply that by your home value, that can give you a sense of cost. Okay, so that's kind of the common denominator.
So if I'm understanding this correctly?
Yes, sir.
The preliminary in twenty twenty-five is two point four nine, the the last time we had something that low was two thousand eight at two two six, is that right?
Yeah, uh two thousand. Yes, as I'm scanning, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, what was the question?
Uh when was the last time that our rate was this low, our projected levy rate?
Just the, just the E P N O, just the E P N O, or the total.
The total.
The T is looking at total, I believe.
Total, millage rate?
Okay, because the last time it was, it was that low was twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we had a two point two nine.
Prior to that, prior to that.
Oh, but prior to last year, you're thinking, okay, yeah, okay.
Right.
All right, okay.
Um comparables, so you know, looking at those numbers in isolation, um they're in isolation. Let's look at three different counties, all of the school districts, this is twenty-four data, this is the known data. Uh twenty-five uh is, I don't, my database isn't complete because those dollars, those amounts are just starting to roll out from different counties. So as of twenty-four, you were at two twenty-nine. Mount Vernon was at four ten on this list, index was at thirty-nine cents. Just to give you a sense of kind of scale over different areas. Might not be fair uh to compare your district at at the time of five point three billion assessed value to, let's just use that line and go down to Stanwood Comenos at eleven point six, okay? A little bit apples and oranges from a size perspective. So on the next slide, let's look at districts that have a similar size in assessed value. University Place is at the top of this list, uh Orcas Island is at the bottom. Right, different compositions of schools, enrollment bases, and just general economics. So there's no perfect comparison, but just different ways to kind of think about it. Okay, a lot of knowledge transfer or reminders of things that you may have heard in the past. So there's a lot on page twenty-two. Why bonds? Capital levies are an option, so let's let's go through these these kind of one by one here. So most school districts for very large capital facilities needs are going to utilize a bond for a couple of different reasons. You can spread the the payments out over a long period of time, even though there's interest associated with that payback. That's a longer dated financing, right, twenty years. Keeps the payments relatively low, hence the tax rates relatively low. Cash is generated upfront, that's one of the big benefits of a bond, especially in inflationary, rising inflationary environments where you can put dollars in the bank, put it to work now while costs are hopefully not escalating too much, opposed to, let's say, spreading those payments out over or construction cycle over a six-year time period. Okay, again, the beauty of my job is I never give you the right or the wrong answer. I'm giving you a spectrum of possibilities, you gotta figure out what's best for you, right? There is not a right or a wrong answer. And then you have some control over the tax payments as far as the pattern, right? I can move principal payments around to create patterns that will be hopefully more appealing to voters than not. Let's let's compare and contrast that to a capital levy, while while I'm at it. Capital levy is a tool where you could, uh just like your E P N O, it's kind of a pay-as-you-go. You could ask for one dollar every year for six years, use those six dollars to go build projects. You would have to phase along those collection amounts, and they don't have to be equal, you could ask for two dollars, one dollar, three dollar, four, whatever the pattern is, doesn't have to be equal. No interest cost. But think of apples to apples, if you need a hundred million dollars and you can spread it over twenty years, even with interest, your taxes, your collection amount, your tax rates are going to be much lower than a hundred million, let's say divided by six. So massive tax burden. It's doable, you'd have to phase it over time, no interest cost, the big benefit, fifty percent plus one, bonds need sixty. So again, no right or wrong answer. But for large capital facilities, unless you are Seattle who does not sell bonds, they run big capital levies. Because that tax base is so big, X dollar amount divided by a massive tax base is a tax bill that voters love to vote yes for.
Didn't you tell us last time you were up here that was, Seattle did like a a a one billion dollar capital levy that resulted in like twenty cents per thousand or something, was that you or somebody else? And they replaced windows throughout their district or something?
Yeah.
It might have been Ryan.
Yeah, it could have been Ryan, yeah. Uh my business partner was here, I think, last time. Um yeah, I mean, massive dollar amounts.
Yeah.
Lake Washington has gone down this path, but they've had some trouble getting sixty percent, so that backup plan was let's get money in the bank via capital levy and, you know, just try and progress.
Yeah, it's it, it's a little bit of what surfaced during the August election with the the two hundred and fifty-four million dollar communications.
Right.
It's because it was a capital bond and there are there are interests that are attached to that, and so that dollar eighty-three increase or whatever it was at that time, you know, covers then that cost of that 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 interest. If you went out without the twenty-year payback, then that 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 amount, that that mill rate in order to to run a capital levy and pay back that a hundred and fifty-five million, fifty-seven million over six years is not something that you're gonna get the fifty percent approval of, and the impact on homeowners.
It's massive.
Is massive, is massive. And so, that's just a hard messaging, it's 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 just, it becomes difficult in the messaging.
Yeah, very.
Um and that's, and so so the the communities that are very, very wealthy or the the property rich well, um are able to do a capital projects levy, which then doesn't, then then taxpayers aren't paying for that interest. Um and there's, that's, the scene is positive, kind of the outside influence has been, schools should be doing capital project levies, not capital bonds, because taxpayers shouldn't be paying debt. And so that's, that's what we were kind of up against within that that communication, we'll continue to be up against that, but it becomes then the need to be able to make sure that we communicate clearly.
And so I think it's important for the board to understand that, that 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 conversation did come up, the people said, hey, there's a way for you to do, to do a a capital levy and not pay any interest on it. People said, hey, there's a way for you to do to do a a capital levy and not pay any interest on it. But you can imagine in an environment like us where a big chunk of our property taxes are residential. We have such a small comparatively small tax base, so a hundred and twenty nine million million dollar high school. Over six years, it's just going to be crazy. So you said there's not a right or wrong answer, well, I would loathe as I am to disagree with you because you're so much smarter about this than me. But I would say it is absolutely a wrong answer to suggest that we could do a capital levy for a hundred and twenty nine million dollar high school.
Now, now, it's not to say that we can't do some projects, either with a capital levy or what we're doing now is using general fund.
Yeah, right.
Um, and moving it into capital. To reduce that impact, and so trying to trying to meet the citizens in the middle somewhere. Rather than going all of it out for a capital bond, paying interest on on playgrounds. That are going in and TK instead, let's let's pay for those playgrounds.
Yeah, that's 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 smart.
And that's, and and so that's the, that's the, that's the stewardship, I think, that that we want.
And and as we move through time and and the the potential scope of work options become more clear.
Right.
Right, the the marginal cost for me to run an additional analysis for you is very low, okay? Happy to do that. And at that time, you know, we can share what does a capital levy look like and what does that mean from a tax bill perspective? So you have apples to apples comparison. If you need to borrow, you know, what does it mean to borrow a hundred million, what does it mean to capital levy for a hundred? I didn't do that math, I'm already killing you with math tonight where I will in a couple pages. We can come back with that, okay, but conceptually, does that make sense? Okay.
That makes sense.
Are are the students, they're.
Yeah, we get to nine o'clock and they have finals week and.
Wow.
Where they're just going to quietly move.
Yes. Thank you for listening as long as you did.
Yeah.
Usually my presentations drive out the crowd. I think I hit the highlights here. Debt capacity. We always do this calculation to make sure what you're asking for is within your legal limits. Preliminary assessed value of five point four billion. Times five percent equals two hundred and seventy million, subtract the the debt that is on the books today. The remaining capacity is two hundred and thirty seven million. My assumption is that is. Well within the bounds of what you could possibly be considering. So I think, you know, check, green, green check, plus. You can borrow without the vote of the people. Uh, that is a much lower statutory threshold at three eighths of one percent. Do the calculations, uh, eighteen million and change. Okay, think of that as a personal loan, you, it's backed by all legally available monies that the district collects. What that really means is general fund. Right, you're putting your general fund on the hook. Okay. Uh, I'm going to move through this pretty quick, so this is, this is kind of what I think about every day. I think about what is your budget, what are the costs, you you all are going to start doing that work. I think if it's a big filter or upside down pyramid, there's all these ideas at the top. You start thinking about the costs, the pros and the cons, we layer on the financing to help you with the pros and the cons. And sooner or later, it just kind of works through the system and the best idea pops out the bottom, right? It becomes narrow, that one idea is successful. Uh, we've talked about, yeah, uh, Superintendent Vender, I talked about some of the revenues, right? SCAP, the state match program, impact fees, I won't go down that path. Timing, super important, I will model. Uh, based upon a potential construction cash flow. An ideal way for you to issue debt, because once you issue the debt, the clock starts ticking on interest. So if you don't need all the money upfront, maybe let's sell this in a couple of different phases. Okay, so those are, and there's some tax law considerations too, that we have to work through and be mindful of. So then what's the impact? Okay, I'm going to get there, what does this mean for taxpayers? There's a lot of assumptions in the model. Credit rating, talked a little bit about credit rating when I was talking about the bond refinancing opportunity. These are some of the. Just high level output from Moody's ratings, uh, the last, uh, full rating was back in twenty twenty one. Uh, at an A one and the the grading scale, if you will, highest to lowest. These are investment grade ratings, these are strong credit ratings. Uh, healthy economy, stable enrollment trend. Uh, I I put in brackets based on national comparisons because it doesn't sound positive. But net net, in Washington State, the way our mechanics work, our general fund balances are quite a bit lower. When Moody's compares them to national medians, okay? They put you in a FICO credit score bucket here, and they're comparing you to school districts all across the nation. And think of the different funding mechanisms in different states, some districts have to have very high fund balances. Because apportionment may only come in twice a year, so you've got to pay a lot of payroll, wait for apportionment, right? You have to have a high fund balance, we don't necessarily need that.
Was there some thought, I thought I marked it on my page, was there some thought that we could get to the AA one? Or was that the application to the state?
Uh, that's your current rating is, oh, sorry, I might have not heard you correctly, sorry, can you repeat?
I I some, for some reason marked on my page, or I highlighted AA one. And I I think for some reason, I think that I got the impression that somehow we could get to AA one.
Uh, in in this environment with how Moody's has a general negative trend. Um, uh, and and outlook on K twelve regionally, state and national, no.
Okay.
There are hardly any double A ones left in the state.
Ah, I see.
And triple A rated entities like, uh, Izaco.
Okay.
Uh, Mercer Island, wealth levels, tax base economies are not triple A any longer.
Okay.
We've had scores of rating downgrades in the last couple of years.
I see, okay.
They they have Google, they read the news, they look at the ratios and. Just in general, the the financial conditions are weaker than they were a couple of years back. Great question, though, and I hope I didn't put that in my presentation and mess you up.
I I don't know why I, I don't know why I did that.
It's okay.
It's by my own.
Assessed value, a lot of talk about assessed, great talk about discussion about assessed value, right? And associated with your impact fee discussions. You know, massive price escalations, right, which which and new construction additions. Um, I like to look at these compound annual annual growth rates. Right over a twenty year period, on average, the district's assessed value grew at eight point three percent. We just received a preliminary twenty five value. And that is a two point eight percent growth rate, again, that's not final final, it'll be close. But markedly, I like to look at the data. Markedly lower than what you've experienced, uh, really, you know, let's say two thousand and eighteen ish or nineteen and on. Which is not uncommon, we've seen some districts go a little bit negative in twenty four or and or twenty five. I think we pulled a lot of asset value forward, if you will, when interest rates are basically zero.
Right. Yeah, that's.
I mean, it, does inflation impact this, it does.
Yeah.
It just, it does.
I have a question.
Yes.
For assessed value, do we have somewhere or maybe in the past have we done this? Like, just to kind of get an idea, like, how much of that assessed, total assessed value is commercial and residential?
Yeah, those are usually really difficult numbers to um, to parse out, but we can, we can contact the county to see if they can do that. Sometimes the legacy systems that have been around forever.
Do you have it?
Didn't account for.
We have done that, Director Bar. Had done that.
Okay, because it's going to be interesting to see, you know, the comp plans are currently in process for the city, for the county. Where that's going versus this versus the talk that we had with the impact fees, right? And this trend and all of that.
Yeah, no, great questions. Another component, um, that sometimes we can um, parse out is new construction and what that addition is. Uh, because that broadens the pie, right? Let's be super simplistic, there's two taxpayers, me and you, we split the bill fifty fifty. Someone else builds a house, now you've got a third of the tax bill, I have a third, they have a third, if all the homes are equal.
The more the merrier.
Yeah, so that that it is a, it's an interesting uh, component.
Uh, the uh, the total residential assessed value is three point nine billion dollars. So call it four, it's close enough to four, so subtract that from your five point two and that's.
Twenty twenty four.
This is twenty four twenty four data, yeah, because they don't have the twenty twenty five data on the site yet. And I can't, I've I've talked with the assessor before about trying to get the the commercial data and they, she seems to not have it. Which seems odd to me because they collect the taxes on it, so, but whatever, but you can do the math on.
This is a summary of the very fine print that will follow. So I ran four scenarios, again, just for discussion purposes and to show you some sensitivity.
Knowledge of the board, understanding, and Trevor's been really good at. Hey, what if you run this, not tonight, but as you're learning and understanding. Reach out, have some conversation, and we can start, you know, getting some of those additional things. And so understand how this will works, knowing that it's a little bit of an iterative process.
Yeah, perfect, and so I think what we're going to learn next.
And for the Linden School District, this is, this is number tw- two hundred and thirty nine that have been done by the Linden School, for the Linden School District.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you told me that one time.
It's just sequential, the next one I just added them, you know.
And these are all Linden School District, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
No, it's, uh, thanks for saying that, it's it, it's just common, because that's just what I do, but no, it's true. So now, uh, I love this, I'm I'm just a teacher, that's all I am, I'm just a teacher. So tonight, we're going to learn the the mechanics of bonds, and we're going to talk about timing. We're going to talk about magnitude, we're going to look at assessed value, and then we're going to see what that does to tax. Bills and overall tax collections, okay? And then we can think about the levers we can push and pull to change assumptions. So I looked at a hundred and forty million dollar capital project deposit. One twenty, one hundred and eighty, all over a twenty year amortization. The projected new tax rate associated with a hundred and forty million. Would be today's structure of tax rates, of your EPNO collections, of your existing bonds. With a buck twenty five added on top. Okay, and same for the next three lines. A buck oh eight added to the top, ninety cents, seventy two. All the detail is there, I will go through one of these models because it's getting late, the others are, you are, the. Uh, the mechanics are exactly the same, it's just a different borrowing amount.
I just wanted to point out that our hundred, that that our previous bond, that figure was, I think, a dollar thirty six, right? It's a dollar thirty something, just for comparison. One thirty six?
One thirty six.
Yeah, I don't know the answer, I could look it up, but I.
It's in the one thirties, just for comparative purpose.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, here we go. The top portion, a hundred and forty million, calculation factors. I've used your underlying credit rating in this model to factor your borrowing cost, the school bond guarantee. I've added some cushion to the tax rates. Because you do, you you would not lock in tax rates in this uh, uh, in this model. Uh, until, you know, a year from now, more than that. Uh, June of twenty six, which is, sorry, this number here, I have this as three different district bond sales. So if today's interest rates are four percent, the first bond has. Uh, if market rates are four percent, I put four and a half in the model, the subsequent sales added a full percent. Interest rates move up and down, we saw the graph.
Right.
Think of this as contingency, just like you have contingency in your construction plans.
That's right.
Okay? Uh, assessed value growth, four percent forever. I guarantee you I will be wrong. We have to make an assumption, doesn't have to be linear, we could have, you know, zero, one, two, three, four, whatever we want. Four percent forever, remember the twenty year compound annual growth rate had an eight on the front?
Yeah.
So I I like to base some of these assumptions in conservative reality, then let's make conservative assumptions. So hopefully over the long haul, you would be at or above that level. Okay?
And that would be a combination of assessed values increasing on individual homes and the addition of.
Homes of new construction, yeah, in commerce, yes.
Combination of the two.
Correct, in total, four percent growth. If things are really humming along, you know, a one percent addition to new construction is going gangbusters. So when you're, you start putting billions of dollars in your assessed value, it takes a lot of new construction to move the needle. Just, let's just be clear. Okay, a hundred and forty million, I broke it up into three sales, you're not going to need all the money upfront. Uh, there will be some pattern that looks like this, it might be more bell curve-y. Where it's a little slower and then you start just, you know, moving dirt and pounding nails and the dollars go up and then it might trail off. But this is, this works for now, again, we'll, we'll look at construction cash flow, potential construction cash flow later. So let's just divide it up, it's going to take you a while to build some things. Below shows your existing bond payments of, you know, three to four million dollars every year. The estimated principal and interest payments for these three bonds, these three loans. Okay? The total bond column, you can see that in twenty seven. You sell bonds in twenty six, that tax collection amount is already set, right? The assessor already set it, you know your tax bill, the new debt and the opportunity to pay for that hits the next calendar year, twenty seven. The increase of, you know, three point three million up to ten point seven. EPNO levy, I just grew it at assessed value, it's growing at four percent every year. That's another push and pull point we can arm wrestle over, okay? But, you know, it's a placeholder, you, you know, knock on wood, you're going to have an EPNO in perpetuity. The total of all the levies, if you had a capital or transportation, we would add that in there. The percentage change. I mentioned earlier, I wanted to highlight dollar amounts versus tax rates. Right, the bonds you have on the books plus your EPNO levy. About fourteen million dollars, thirteen and a half, um, this calendar year, maybe about fourteen million next. Based on today's interest rates, the assumptions we talked about up top, assessed value is the big driver. Right, if I put ten percent assessed value forever, you know, that tax rate is going to go down, but the tax bill isn't. Fifty one, fifty, sorry, sorry, excuse me, fifty seven percent change year over year. In the total dollars collected. By the Linden School District in this example. Okay? Uh, the next, in the gray boxes, my guess of what your existing debt, uh, millage rate or tax rate looks like. It's, you know, round numbers about fifty cents. Add the buck twenty five for the new bonds, that buck twenty five is the sum of these three bond sales. From a tax rate perspective, and then add it up. Questions, comments, concerns, challenges, I'm ready.
Would you, would you do me a favor and on number two hundred and, what was this one, this is two?
Two thirty nine.
Two thirty nine, and you got two more, so on two forty two.
Forty three.
What do you, or forty three, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
On your total debt service. In in the future, if you don't mind, Trevor, would you sum those three columns to the right? So that we can see the total amount of the total debt service and the total amount of the total interest?
Yeah, sure.
Mind, um, just in, because that's like the first thing I do, ever, always do with.
Yeah, sure, yes.
Look at that, because I'm I'm curious about what that looks like, but you would make it easier for me.
You know, let's just use round, uh.
Well, I already know the number here, I'm just.
No, 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 but I, conceptually.
Yeah.
Interest adds up over twenty years. It's significant, right, it's thirty million, it's forty two, it's forty four. Rule of thumb, you know, you you borrow a hundred million dollars. Rule of thumb, you know, you, you borrow a hundred million dollars, fifty million is gonna be added as interest. Again, that, that's over-exaggerating those proportions right there, but let's just simplify it. We make decisions in today's dollars, we do not make decisions in future dollars. I'll leave it at that.
I think the request, though, was just to have the number there.
Yeah, sure, easy.
We're not, I don't wanna say we're not scared of the number, we, we know there's interest.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, not at all.
I just, no, no, crystal clear, I just want, I just want folks to realize, it becomes significant over time.
Yeah, you know that.
Um, it would become much more significant if these were thirty-year amort, amortization bonds.
And that's kinda where Director Martinez was kinda kicking around that, oh, it was fifteen, remember the last, when we were meeting back in August or whatever.
Two-hundred-and-fifty million, so one-hundred-and-forty.
And then, and then, then that gets into that, well, that's a higher rate then, and then the voters, it's a higher impact on the, on the families right now, that we're trying to reduce, but those are the, those are the kinda thoughts, I think, I think this board wants to, wants to kick around a little bit.
Yep, a hundred percent.
Well, our, our no campaign made a big deal out of it, so we should make sure we understand what it is and we can explain it.
Yeah.
And is there a way to reduce it? Mm-hmm. And then what's the offset of that in terms of cost on the front end for, for families that have just purchased a home? And that's, that's, that's the, I think, challenge in front of us and in front of you.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so this is a, this is de- described as a, as a flat rate, meaning we kept the, 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 the rate the same, and as assessed value goes up, three-point-seven, four, four percent at projection, then there'd be a higher collection on that.
Uh, uh, constant tax rate times growing assessed value equals more revenue, AKA more taxes. It's all, it's just multiplication.
Right, correct.
Tax rate times A V, if you keep A V con, or, tax rate constant, and A V grows over time, that's exactly what's happening here, right?
That one.
This, this goes up every single year.
Correct. And that dollar twenty-five column on the new bonds.
Yeah.
That tax rate, that's, that's keeping a flat tax, a same tax rate, and there is a way to, to, to scale that up or down.
Yes.
In, in, in scenarios.
Right, yes.
Right. Yeah, right, we, I think we had talked about in previous sort of structures where we had the rate kinda going up towards.
They had a, they had a low to start with and going up over time.
And we thought that, uh, we thought that that was good because it would put a little bit more pressure on sort of those new homes, but we figured, we figured that that was a fairly significant interest cost by doing.
Yeah, yeah, that's the downside, right?
Yeah.
And if you, if you line it up with twenty-thirty-five where existing debt goes off the books, that's another time in which you can, that's another level lever you can pull to keep tax rates more steady. So let's say the overall tax rate is three dollars and fifty cents, if you, if you set it up so that when the existing debt goes off the books to increase a little bit, and then keep that tax rate at three fifty instead of going back then down to two seventy-five. But that, then you also have to say, are there gonna be additional needs, uh, in twenty-thirty-six that, that may, may be there? And so those are the, that's the journey, um, that, that we are on.
But that, I, I love that discussion, because think of, in this, you know, a little bit of a random walk here, but assessed value is a big driver in, in tax rates, okay? And existing debt, remember, there were some years, remember that tax rate, Charlie, I don't wanna flip back cuz I'll make myself dizzy. Right, there was, there was no bond payments.
We, we ran a bond in two thousand and eleven, we, it, we could not pass it, we could not pass it until two thousand and fifteen, which meant there weren't any bond payments till two thousand and sixteen.
So that was elevated. Uh, assessed value, especially here, has gone up a lot, so the, the tax rates have gone down. That's the differential of a buck twenty-five for the three, you know, the, the guess of what three, these three bonds could look like.
Yep.
Superintendent Van Groot was really discussing capacity, you know, in a decade, that drop, you could come back with a future ask of a capital levy or a bond, or increased E P and O collections, tech levy.
Yeah.
Right, fill that gap.
Fill the gap.
Receive more money, keep the tax rate relatively constant, or, or, or just, you know, maybe not have it drop as far. Again, just optionality, right, creates optionality. And my entire twenty-one years of doing this job is trying to make sure we have tax stability.
Right.
Right, we don't want volatility, once the bonds are locked in, I can't do anything about assessed value, and that's why there's volatility here. But we're, we're locking things in with a purpose at the time of sale, we're making conservative assumptions, and hopefully it's promises made, promises kept. But that kind of drop is significant, it gives you, again, optionality for future discussions.
It's significant if you let it drop, and then you let it drop, and then you go a few years with it low, and then you find yourself with needs, and then you, then you, then you have to convince voters to go back to what it used to be, and voters have a short, short memory when it comes to that kinda stuff, so.
Uh, one way to think about this, um, is taking the dollar twenty-five tax rate, the differential that jumped from twenty-seven, uh, from twenty-six to twenty-seven. You know, a dollar twenty-five, it's really easy when you're using multiples, that's why the metric system is so nice, right, using decimals around. That's a hundred and twenty-five dollar. It costs a hundred and twenty-five dollars for every a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value to service the debt on those three, the one-hundred-and-forty million. One-hundred-and-forty million only, not your E P and O, not the existing bonds. To, if you wanna talk just the cost in this example, it's a buck twenty-five, and if you have a six-hundred-thousand-dollar house, that's seven-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. Right, sometimes I'm, I'm, right, I bring reality to the equation, to the discussion.
Average assessed value in Long, or in, sorry, in the district is six, six-sixty-seven, is that what I told you, David? Six-sixty-something, just so everybody's clear.
Yeah.
I think it might be lower here. Where, that was from the assessors.
That was from that same data I just brought up.
Six, what? Six-sixty?
Hey, just, you keep talking, I'll come up.
Send it to me later.
Um. The next, uh, how many, uh, three slides times three options, nine slides, or they run the same?
Yeah, okay.
I, I would lo, I, I don't wanna go through them, but I will, if you want me to.
Well, I.
Different, it, it, seriously, they're, they, the only thing that changes, yes, you know, all the assumptions are the same, except in this one, we're, we're collecting forty million each year down to twenty, instead of one forty in the previous.
Six-twenty-seven, sorry, you, you were right, David, I'll, I'll admit it.
It's consistent with what Zillow looks like.
Yeah, I know, that's.
So I like the assessors because that's on all homes, where Zillow and some of the things you put in newspapers, those are on homes that are sold.
That's true.
And that, that, that can elevate, and people think, well, that's the average home value, no, there's, there's three-hundred-and-fifty, there are other homes in Linden, they're just having sold.
Yep.
That's true.
Yeah.
But that's, that's a high number.
That number does include, like, undeveloped property as well, so.
Trevor, go ahead.
I was curious, um, I'm looking at, this is just me thinking outside the box, for capital levy projects, is it possible for you to give information, not now, but at a future time, on what a six-year collection cycle would be for a forty-million-dollar ask?
Yes.
That would be, I think, helpful.
Did you say a hundred and forty million?
No, no, forty.
Four, four-zero.
Four-zero.
Yes.
Why forty?
Forty, my mind is just going, we have a hundred and forty-dollar, a hundred and forty-million-dollar bond, what would it look like to collect? Um, I wrote the number here, I think, six-seven, six-point-seven, six-point-six-six, definitely.
So what I'm going to build is a capital levy calculator, Ben will have it, and we can run as many and out.
That'd be great.
The, the capital levies are very easy.
Yeah.
Uh, because it's just division and multiplication, so.
I just wanna have more information, cuz it's, I mean, if we're looking at presenting this to the community, someone will inevitably ask something similar to that.
Yes.
Why don't we just run this, cuz then we don't have to pay all these.
Can you, can you restate your thinking beyond the four, forty million, I didn't hear the.
Yeah, well, I'm just looking at this one-hundred-and-forty, a hundred-and-forty million, if that's what we ask for the bond.
An arbitrary number with a hundred and forty million.
Hundred and forty million, yeah, and let's just say, instead of a hundred-and-forty-million bond, we ask for a hundred-million bond, a hundred dollar, a hundred and million-dollar bond, and do a forty-million-dollar levy.
And, so a combination of the two?
Not necessarily at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Just, yeah, just random numbers, not knowing what we're gonna use the money for, but, but those, yeah. So if you have that calculator, then, then we can play with that.
Just to run scenarios like that.
Is that, is that just simply assessed value divided by forty million?
Forty million, let's just say it's even collections, forty million divided by, how many collection periods, maximum six? So it would be forty divided by six, divided by the assessed value.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, question, is there a cap on the capital levy?
No, you can, you can ask for whatever you like. Great question.
So there's no capacity effect for cap?
Uh, can't go over the two-hundred-and-fifty-some million.
No, 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 that's for debt, capital levy is its own beast, you could ask for any dollar amount. There does become a dollar amount where I believe the taxpayers would push back.
Of course.
But the sky's the limit for it, I guess.
Yes, yes.
And it's fifty percent.
Plus one, don't forget about the plus one.
Fifty percent plus one person.
We've had them fail at fifty-fifty.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I mean, just thinking about the phasing, that's why I asked.
No, it's a good question, because, I mean, we didn't really talk about that, you know, do you, I mean, I'm sure we'll talk about, do you take Partascope and like, right, I don't know.
Cuz it kinda fits that narrative of, you know, thinking outside of the box, the phasing and, you know, good question.
Just curious, yeah, you know, we have the, if you take the previous projects, you know, we had, we had twenty-six million, and that would have expanded Vospec and ISAM.
Right.
To add six permanent classrooms, you know, in there, and, and so then, is that, is that something that the, the community would support through a capital levy, I think is the, is something to questioning that will happen? And then what does that cost, um, for, for doing it that way?
I think we're up for a lot of scenarios, it's like, he had two-hundred scenarios, but not, hopefully not that many for us, you know, so.
Any other?
You have a cool job.
Yeah, appreciate, really appreciate this, Trevor.
Partnership is what I live and die by, so it's both ways, it's a two-way street, thank you for saying that, but right back at you.
Now, I wanna make sure that we don't have any questions, and then again, Trevor's really responsive.
I have a question, too.
Okay, all right, cool. Great, you're welcome, thank you.
You will not hit traffic.
You will not hit traffic.
All right, um, yeah, so, at this point, I, I would like to ask the board, so we have, the next thing on the agenda is, uh, second readings of several policies, right? No, thank you, um, there's no time sensitivity around these policies. What do you, do you wanna do this tonight, or do you, it's, you know, it's nine-thirty, um, we can finish these up? We could pump them to the next meeting.
I'd like to move forward with them unless there's any.
Yeah, I think so, we can just get by them, but can I ask for a two, three-minute break or something?
Can I make a motion for a five-minute break?
Five, you know, numbers.
Two to three to five, four minutes and thirty-second breaks.
Okay. Okay, I make a motion to.
There's significant conversation to be had, maybe.
Motion recess?
Yeah, motion to recess for five minutes, please.
Yeah, second.
He's seconded.
I'll second.
Uh, Perkins?
Yes, I.
All right, all right.
I'm gonna keep this, keep it, keep going.
Yeah, I agree if we start getting.
Okay, I was gonna.
We could go hours. Does anybody have any significant issues?
I see, have a good night.
We'll figure it out. Can I eat my chips? I'm gonna change my chips. I'm gonna get these back, cuz I don't think I need them right now. I'm gonna tell anybody else.
You've got it.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks for doing that, sorry we didn't use it, less is more.
Thanks, Michelle.
I was running behind you the other day, and when you turned, um, it's time. I'm gonna have to send this while you're sitting here, cuz it's the only thing tonight. Save us a little bit of time.
I'm gonna use this pen, cuz this pen, I can't get the tap off.
I did that on purpose, too, to watch you struggle for the whole meeting.
I don't think his calculation is correct, cuz I plugged it in here and it.
Oh, yeah?
It came up with a weird number, so, I'll just wait for him.
But he'll probably, probably.
I mean, the spreadsheet seems, the model seems fairly simple, but.
It takes you a while to figure it out, and one of the things that I think is, it's really critical, I was gonna make the point, but, I'll make it another time, but, you know, we start talking about tax rate analysis of these different scenarios, I mean, you know, is a buck twenty-five versus a buck oh-eight gonna make a difference? You know, is a buck twenty-five versus seventy-two cents gonna make a difference? That might make a difference.
It might, yeah, I'm with you, I think, I think the rest in between are incremental.
But you look at those bonds that failed, there's, there's a six-point-eight-million-dollar bond on there that failed.
I know, you know, I know.
Is it too expensive, or is it just the economy?
I think it's the second, I think that's it. Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
Good to see you too. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Well, she has to have the numbers, she has to have the.
I know, I know.
This isn't that long, we've gone till like eleven-thirty before.
I'm sure you have, I was, uh, in Seattle, I tried to call you late last night, cuz another late night.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you, Michelle, good to meet you guys.
See ya.
Hey.
Oh, it's gonna go quick. Bye, Michelle.
I've heard you could light these on fire.
I'm sure you could.
It's not real food, guys.
This, carbohydrates burn really well, just like they do in your body, right? Have you seen the, um, the movie, uh, Flamin' Hot? Oops. I haven't intended on eating these tonight.
It's, it's a.
A movie, Flamin' Hot? It's a, it's a, it's a, just like a regular movie, but it's about the guy that saved the cheeto plant.
Did you?
At the, at the.
California.
Because of his idea. He was like a.
Called Flamin' Hot.
Yeah, and he, he was a janitor and he worked himself up to. It's really, it's a true story, it's really good.
Thank you for the gifts, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
What, what, what did we get you, can I see?
Can I see?
We are being recorded, by the way.
That's okay, so we got a Camelback, if I'm pronouncing that right, bottle.
Okay, water bottle.
Water bottle, and then we've got.
For those of you at home.
A beanie that has the Linden.
Really nice beanie.
Linden Lions, you know, so. And, oh, this is so cute, what is this, scarf?
It looks like it might be a scarf.
It's a scarf.
Or a, a baby blanket.
And with pockets, oh.
Nice, it's good for.
Oh, with pockets.
So it's gonna be cold out there tonight, gotta get your beanie out.
Yeah.
Oh, this, these are so good, thank you. Shit it. Actually, the water bottle.
I'm ready to go. Or you gotta wear them the way they do, the kids wear them, like this now, that's how you gotta do it. Or do the old, uh, what was that guy?
Is that what they do?
Yeah. The Beretta?
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
Remember?
Take it in your back, yeah.
And then you gotta roll the cigarettes up right here.
Oh, man.
I used to steal my mom's cigarettes and roll them in my teeth. I used to steal my mom's cigarettes, roll them in my teeth.
Every once in a while, I pull up some of those on YouTube, just, what I love is if they leave the commercials in.
Oh, yeah.
It's the old seventies and eight, I mean. The one that came up was there was a Die Hard commercial, you know, I'm a car, I'm a car guy, my brother, there was a Die Hard commercial back in the seventies where the mom and dad are in their car, and the car won't turn over, so the dad goes in and asks the son, this is, you know, seventeen little kid, bar's car. So, sure, dad, he gets a smirk on his face, he throws it at some, you know, it's a, like a hemi coup d'or or something, and dad's like, he can barely drive it.
That's funny.
I love it, I don't know if.
No, I don't remember that one, but, yeah. I've been watching through Miami Vice.
Oh, no.
By myself.
Not why, uses to watch it. Those are great.
No, it's not.
It's not?
It's horrible, it does not hold up.
It wasn't, I loved that show.
Oh, I loved it too.
Maybe, I, well, I haven't watched it, so maybe you're right.
Yeah, it is, it is overactive, it's campy and cheesy and just not a good show to watch. I mean, cops walking around with a jet pistol just in their pocket, you know, I'd, something I never noticed before, but, yeah. But I still watch it though, because it's like nostalgia.
The Ferrari was.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's the most beautiful Ferrari of the day, although that wasn't a Ferrari, it was a Corvette.
That one was.
Yeah.
Cause why, and the real ones like, well, even back then was a million dollar car or whatever.
Right, right.
Oh, that is so sweet, thank you.
I don't need them. I don't have orange fingers.
Man, as soon as my kiddo gets a bag of Cheetos, I'm like, get away from myself.
And here you are eating them.
I know, I know, they're delicious, I, now I, I can empathize with them.
Do you know the story behind hot Cheetos?
I'm not gonna tell them, but.
Well, I was just telling them about the movie, the, have you seen the movie?
No, I didn't know they had that movie.
Yeah, there's a movie about the guy.
Yeah.
It's really good, it's a great movie.
Alright, let's go. Let's, uh, let's reconvene, so, um, at this time, we will go through, uh, second readings of four policies, um, seventeen thirty-three, twenty twenty-two, thirty-four fourteen, and thirty-four twenty-four.
During the first reading on January second, the board inquired as to whether other districts in the county provide compensation to their board directors, have received the following information from other county districts, Ferndale, Bellingham, Meridian Blaine currently provide the option for board compensation. McTag Valley, Mount Baker, um, uh, no option provided for board compensation at this time. Uh, there was no discussion about amending the language within the policy during the first reading, so, uh, no notes have been added.
So question, are we moving this to third reading, or can we vote on it today?
We could vote on it today.
To have discussion, just to clarify, to have discussion, we should make a motion in second.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy seventeen thirty-three board compensation.
Second. Alright, uh, motion in the second, any discussion?
Reiterating the question, I guess, or you already know that, so, oh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this, and, uh, I think that, given the amount of, of time that we put into this, uh, I'm doing the math right now, the three hours that we've already been here, at fifty dollars a meeting is sixteen sixty-seven, which is just a little bit over minimum wage, so we, I mean, certainly this is not a, a issue of, you know, we're getting paid crazy amounts, and, and when I say we, I'm talking about future boards, to clarify, cause this isn't pertaining to us per se. I think that, just given the amount of, um, hours that we do, we have, just on record for recorded meetings, from last year, there was twenty meetings that we had, and that's not including some of the other retreats, so, let's just take the twenty meetings, times fifty, that's a thousand, which is seventeen twenty-four an hour, I mean, and, and we're, and that doesn't even count the amount of time that we're doing research and, and are due diligence to be good board members, so, I, I would be in favor of this, I think fifty is a, a low enough number that it's not a, um, uh, an incentive per se to get on the board and, and do it for money, but it's, it helps someone who in the future might have reservations because they could use an extra fifty bucks, I guess. And I like that there's a limit of, of how much is a maximum compensation per year.
And that maximum is four thousand eight hundred dollars currently.
Yes.
Currently. Does that get re?
There has been some, some legislation imposed that didn't pass last, I think, so there, there could be some, and it's usually just tied to inflation.
It's based on state law, though.
But it is in the state law, though, not, not board policy.
I would concur with Danny, and I would just add to what, what, uh, sorry, Director Martinez said, I think that there is a, there's a component that some folks might feel of financially, that there's a burden to them for being on the school board. Um, it's not something I ever had to experience before, but I'll share candidly that, um, you know, when we, when we had our, our, uh, our board, uh, the WASTA conference, I was faced with having to take a couple of days off of work unpaid because I didn't have the vacation, and I wasn't making the kind of money that I had been before, and didn't have the number of vacation days, et cetera. It wouldn't have been an issue for me in previous years, but it was, it wasn't the reason I didn't go, just sort of clear, I, we had busiest time of the year for the food bank, but it makes me think about others who might experience that same thing, where they are, are faced with, you know, do I, do I participate in the board, or do I not? This isn't gonna answer that whole, whole situation for them, but it, it might help them somewhat, um, and I would, I would reiterate what Director Martinez said, that we're not, we're not adding this to our, to our own pockets, cause we, we can't take advantage of this, I mean, the only two of us could, which are Director Hickman and myself, if we were, were re-elected in November. So, I think it, I, it doesn't, it doesn't put any undue burden currently on the, on the district, and I think it requires a budget uh, resolution that includes the money, so to answer, cause you had a concern about, why are we taking educational dollars away from folks? If we were in a situation like that, perhaps the budget that gets passed doesn't, doesn't allot for it, and, um, so I, I think it's a, I think it's one of those things that, uh, that future board members might appreciate, and then every board member has the opportunity, I doubt of it, so I, I think it's worthwhile pushing forward.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on that, just because, but, I feel better about being a yes vote for a future board, because there is the option to waive the funds, if, you know, that's. But I hate money attached to anything, I think it, I just don't like it, but, that's my own, own opinion.
Can you, can someone remind me where the, um, where the funds are taken out of, I had it in my notes here, but I can't seem to locate it.
Access levy funds?
Access levy funds, so, so levy, the, the, the local, local taxes.
Yeah.
Same, uh, thoughts, you know, kinda on both sides of, you know, um, it's not really that much, uh, money that, you know, one would count as an incentive, uh, but also, um, on the other side, when we kinda signed up for this, I, you know, just like Director Hickman said, kind of tying it to money personally, on a personal level, uh, I have that, you know. See, I know the Punjabi word, I can't say it in English, but, I have that, you know, uh, anyone English here?
Reservation.
Reservation, yes, that would be good, thank you, so I have that reservation, cause in Punjabi, I would, I would say, hitchkichahadhoreya, so hitchkichahad, I have that reservation of, you know, um, but then again, understand all the points, so I'm kinda torn up on this one, really, um, even though it's a easy policy, easy and whatnot, but yeah, agree with, uh, all of the points presented.
Yeah, I, um, only to add, I, like I said, um, I think hearing, you know, some of the stories and, and after considering the fact that, number one, like you said, Director Olsley, you know, requires a, a budget resolution, and, and so that's one stopgap, and then the other one is, is that any board member can waive, and then the third is that it doesn't apply to us, so it's not like we're, we're impacting the current board. Yeah, I, that, I, I, I'm at more ease with the, I think so. Any more discussion?
No, I just, the only uncertainty I have is, because it's, it's dependent on the RCW, on what's the maximum amount of it, right? I am not sure how, like, can, can boards, uh, assign a maximum amount, and say, even though the RCW, you know, let's just entertain, for example, next year it changes, and says, RCW now says that the maximum amount could be seven thousand, so can, can, can boards kinda assign a maximum amount only for their board or district, et cetera, that's a procedural question I would have for this policy.
Yeah, the way this policy is written, um, is that the policy would need to be updated to match any increase that, uh, RCW would patch, cause it's outlined as four thousand eight hundred dollars.
It actually states it there, right, yeah.
But I don't think that, if I interpret your question correctly, I don't think that if you didn't ma, if you didn't change this policy, it would still be forty-eight hundred dollars, even though the state went to seven thousand.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think, I, I think you could make it lower, you just can't make it higher.
Right, but what if the, okay, once you, once the RCW changes to seven thousand, this policy will automatically change?
No.
Oh.
We would have to redo, we'd have to do the redo.
Updated, okay, and at that point, then, can the board say, well, you know what, maybe the state is pushing, cause they said, I'm gonna change the number, cause they said ten thousand, now that's kinda like, you know, bringing, putting a burden on the district that we don't really want, so we want as a board that even though that's allowed, ten thousand, we wanna put a cap and say that.
Yep.
Is it doable? Okay. Yeah, that's the only, you know, component of uncertainty that I had, okay.
To, to even hit that forty-eight hundred, there, there's ninety, ninety-six, ninety-eight requests that need to be done, so, ninety-six, just as a, another informational point, if you're at fifty fifty, every request to get to that forty-eight hundred, and we're certainly not there.
And well, we would, we would set up a structure that, to be able to kinda log those things, so like, when I send my superintendent update, I'm thinking that's a couple hours. If you're going to the links, when you're doing some of those, some of those are, and so then that is, that is then a claim um, that can be made, so it's not just the meetings.
Okay.
It's, it's some of the other requirements in order to be prepared for board meetings and.
And I'll, I'll tell you, I've served on church boards, and the level of effort and, and, and what you're required to do if you wanna be a good board member, far outstrips that, I, I get the concern about money, and, but, but this isn't a nonprofit, this is a, this is a, a, a significant entity, and it, if you can do the job right, you gotta put a lot of time, and so, um, I think time is money, and I think, you know. Yeah, anyway.
Well, with that, um, we can call a halt, alright, um, so, it's, what's that? So, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm aye.
Huh?
Not me, nay.
Nay, okay.
Nay.
So, by a voice vote, the, oh, two nays, sorry, okay, so by a voice vote carries three to two.
Good discussion.
Policy twenty twenty-two.
It passed, right? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, three to.
Okay, sorry, here.
During the first reading on January second, there was no discussion on amending the updated language, um, so no notes have been included.
I'll entertain a motion to approve policy.
Nope, wrong end of the table. That is great.
Yeah, okay, it happened one time, stand my system.
What she said, I'll entertain a motion to pass, uh, policy twenty twenty-two, internet resources in this.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay.
Who seconded, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay.
Just doing it, I'm just doing it all.
That's great, I love it, any, any discussion? Coming once, going twice, hearing none. What's that? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Alright, uh, motion carries by a voice vote. Uh, next one, uh, thirty-four fourteen, infectious diseases.
Yeah, notes have been added next to specific language in the policy that was discussed by the board during the first reading on January second. Uh, those notes are on page sixty-nine on the bottom, uh, Director Hickman had an interest in adding language about seeking input from stakeholders in the event of a school closure.
Yeah, I, make a mo. Make a motion to approve the updated policy thirty-four fourteen infectious diseases.
I second.
Is it updated?
Or the?
It's not updated, so.
Policy thirty-four fourteen infectious diseases.
Okay.
I second.
Let me clarify, just so everybody's understanding, when I read those, those comments, they have not been incorporated into any changes, and so for Director Hickman to make changes, she would make a motion.
I was just waiting for that time.
Yep, yep. Does that, does that?
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve this.
Can I, and then can I just make a motion?
And then she'll make a motion to amend the language.
And I would like to make a motion to amend the language, starting on page sixty-nine on the last paragraph, or, yeah, where it says, a school principal, or Jesse knee, so at the end, it says, um, the local health officer in consultation with the superintendent can take whatever action deemed necessary to control or eliminate the spread of disease, including closing a school. Airmouth, uh, Director Martinez, I'm gonna talk about COVID for a hot second, okay, so after that, I would like to, the following sentence to say, in such cases, an opportunity will be provided for stakeholder input, ensuring that legal, medical, and community perspectives are considered to inform decision-making. Do you want me to repeat that, Kelly?
Legal, medical, and.
Community perspectives are considered to inform decision-making.
So that's the motion.
That's the motion.
Yes.
Okay, do I have, or, do I, I'll entertain a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have, is that discussion?
Yeah, um, just because I felt like during, um, COVID, there was a lot of, obviously, the, the previous board, for all of us, did a great job of allowing perspectives to be heard, but it was what wasn't done with those perspectives, that I thought there could be more. So when I went, met with the superintendent, um, superinten, the interim superintendent Strom.
Strom.
There was opportunities that he met with, like, local health officials, as well as state health officials, and they were like Zoom meetings or whatever, but I'm like, well, that's an opportunity to just say, hey, this is what my community's saying, and then I felt like it was just like this one, one narrative, and there wasn't these outside sources that were also, um, able to throw in their two cents, that I felt like would have been helpful, and just how the state made decisions, and I know that we're just one little local board, but I just think it's important to, to just have a disclaimer in there that says that we care about what our community says as well, when we're making these decisions. That's it.
Um, okay, I am sorry, I dropped the ball on this one, uh, in terms of, you know, um, looking at the terms, I, uh, might have taken it lightly, okay, um, a couple things, and, and today, I, I filled out a survey coming from, um, our, uh, what do you call that? Board of Health, Health of Board, Board Health, County Board Health.
Department of Health?
Yeah, the county, county department of.
County Department of?
Yes, County Department of Health, and in that survey, were very specific questions, and do you want, oh, man, I wish I had that survey in front of me. It was basically giving more than just advisory votes, you know, the intention, that, that's where it was leading to, to unelected health, um, officials, basically, cause the Department of Health, uh, or Department of Health, uh, i- is an elected position. So, I'm thinking about this one, so a couple changes that are kind of, you know, glaring out over here at me, is a student who has been diagnosed, di, sorry, one, two, three, third paragraph, the board authorizes the school principal to exclude a student who has been diagnosed by a physician, it has been striped, and then it's been replaced by licensed healthcare provider. Now, I'm wondering if that is because of the change that is coming from the RCW down there, that is, um, referenced, or is this coming from WASTA? So, that's one question, because those two are very different terms, physicians, these are MDs, these are doctors, these are the licensed. Physicians, these are MDs, these are doctors, these are the licensed medical people that can, you know, uh, write a prescription and whatnot. Versus a licensed healthcare provider, these could be, um, people that are, uh, therapists. So, you know, and the likes. So there's, there's a difference between the two and I haven't, I would like to look, you know, uh, dig deeper into that one, where, where is that coming from, where, where that change is coming from? Um, you know, because, uh, usually what we see, some of the changes doesn't necessarily stem from the RCW, but from WASDA model policy. So that's one.
Can I pause you for a second? Shouldn't, shouldn't we resolve this, uh, edited language before we look at other language?
So, so we have an amendment, that the problem is we have an amendment on the board, on the, so we should vote.
Vote for that one? Yeah, okay, okay.
We should vote on, on that one first before we start.
Another discussion, yeah, sorry.
Do we make a motion or? No, we did make a motion a second.
Say it. Okay, so are we ready to vote on, okay, so, uh, I'll, let's vote on the amended, uh, policy.
The amendment.
The amendment to the policy, um, I'll entertain a vote.
No, we already got the motion and seconded. That was discussion, and so now it's, do you approve the amendment?
Do you approve? Yeah, that's what I meant. Uh, this is, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so the, uh, the policy is amended, the policy amendment has passed.
Now I would entertain a motion to approve the policy as amended.
Right.
Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the policy as amended.
So moved.
Seconded.
So seconded.
Now discussion?
Now discussion. Okay.
I just, I think I'll, I can answer.
Did I jump the game?
No, I didn't. Okay, so when it's talking about licensed health providers, when some, it's, it's talking about infectious disease diagnosis. And I think what they mean is like, um, a physician assistant or a nurse practitioner, they, they can give someone a diagnosis. I don't think it's in regards to like, what'd you say, mental health?
Therapist, yeah, or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's just in regards to an infectious disease.
Licensed healthcare provider.
That's high, I was thinking of a PA or something like that.
Because that's what I wanna lean on to, yes, just to make sure, you know, that's what it means, so, okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you for, uh, clarifying that then, because that was the biggest concern I see over there. Is, is again, uh, you know, having that, you know, surveys this morning, uh, well, afternoon, and then looking at this, you know, and then looking back at, uh, COVID, all of that, you know, we, we wanna, uh, make sure that decisions are not made just because, you know, in, for one party only, and then, um, like, uh, Director Hickman said, all of the stakeholders are included in that decision?
Yeah, I think.
More so, so.
I think Director Hickman's amendment helps that.
Yeah, yeah, no?
Allows public input.
Agreed. And then the accountability, accountability part of that as well, so, yeah.
Do we need to make a motion for the amended, uh, did it already pass?
That's right. It already passed. Amendment passed, we haven't voted on the policy.
I lost track of the stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Director Broer had maybe two things?
Yeah, did you have anything else?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
We already have the motion.
We already had a motion, okay.
All in favor.
All in favor of the amended policy thirty-four fourteen, please say aye.
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 That is quite confusing.
It is. I appreciate all your help.
Took me, took me a year, I still didn't get it.
All right, second reading, policy thirty-four twenty-four opioid overdose reversal.
Uh, during the first reading on January second, um, there was no discussion about amending the updated language, so no notes have been included. There was discussion, but none, uh, about amending.
I move that we approve policy three four two four opioid-related overdose reversal.
Seconded.
All right, motion, uh, motion and seconded. Any discussion? I, I just wanted to point out, I did a bit of research after the last call, and I'll state for the record that I am not a doctor nor have I played one on television, but I did spend a lot of time, because I heard somebody ask the question, are there reversal, are there reversal medications for trank? And I, and, and there are, but they're not approved for use in humans. So this, so this particular, uh, so the concern was the inclusion of trank with the, with the, uh, fentanyl, which is a huge problem and has been a huge problem for a while, and does that create sort of a, does that offset the capacity of Narcan to? And, and to some degree it does, but there is, there are, um, it's quite interesting reading if you wanna do some reading, but I heard that question in the last meeting, and so I did some research and, and so, so that's the answer. All of the, all of the, um, experts on the subject say that in spite of that, the recommendation still is to give Narcan in a, in a suspected drug overdose situation. Um, so, anyway, I'm in favor of approving the policy. I think it's great. Thank you. Thank you for that research. Any other questions, discussion? All right, all in votes, all in favor of approving policy thirty-four twenty-four?
Aye.
Aye? Police, uh, policy passes by a voice vote. All right, and that brings us to the end of our.